Good morning. We're on the air. Mr. Chair, whenever you're ready to begin.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vialobos. Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the December 8th hearing of Santa Barbara. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Vialobos, can you move forward with items two and three, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara Television, CSB TV Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lompoc, San Diego Valley, Semenya, and Orket areas. Rebroadcasting Commission hearings are on Fridays after 5:00 p.m. on CSB TV Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Moving on to the roll call, Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Park. I think Commissioner Park is just a little late this morning. Commissioner Blau.
Here.
And Chair Farini.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vialobos. Mr. Wilson, how about the agenda status report?
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. We'll start to the status of our agenda today. We have five items listed. One item of note is item number two, which is the appeal of the Cuyahoga Hills Cannabis cultivation. Staff did receive a correspondence from the appellant withdrawing that appeal. So when we get to item number two, the recommended motions will be to acknowledge the withdrawal and drop it from the agenda. So with that, we'll be pretty much down to four items. Staff's ready to present on the appeal of the ADU, which is item number one, and then we have a number of briefings from long-range planning and a discussion item regarding the shopping center zoning requirement that we had talked about a couple of weeks ago. So that's the status of the agenda, and we're ready to present on all those items today, Mr. Chair. And I can move on to the projection report if you'd like.
Yes, please, Mr. Wilson.
So on the projection report, as we talked about last week, we're going to have a special hearing next Wednesday, starting at 9:30 a.m. The purpose of that special hearing is to make the required findings to continue to have remote hearings. That will take us through to the new year, and then after the new year, we can reconvene and reconsider remote hearings and how that setup will work. This will take us through the holiday season. And the reason for that is there is a 30-day requirement per law that we have to make those findings every 30 days. Then moving into January, our first hearing of 2022 will be on January 12th. We have two items on that date, a cannabis cultivation project in the Carpinteria area, and then a safety element update by long-range planning to go over the vulnerability assessment briefing that went to the board a couple of weeks ago. And then later in January, on January 26th, we have another cannabis operation in the Carpinteria area as well on the 26th. And then February, we have one item on February 2nd, which is an appeal of the El Dorado Gardens outside of Beulah Town. And then February 9th, we are looking at two items, the appeal of the single-family dwelling, and then another cannabis project, an appeal of a cannabis project on that date as well. And then we're all the way into February 23rd, as far as projection report scale. We have some appeals of the Crown Castle projects that will be heard on that date. And then we have the tentatively projected comprehensive plan annual progress report for that date. One other item, and I mentioned this last week, we're still working with the applicants for a large cooler project in the Santa Maria area. And that will be, hopefully, we're looking at a date after the beginning of the year for that project. So that concludes the projection report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Commissioner Blau, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to warn you on the continuing you talked about, or dropping the agenda today. I'm going to have a little concern about that. We talked about this at some prior hearings, but I am not comfortable with dropping an appeal from the agenda because the appellant withdrew the appeal. I have concern about that. I've had correspondence with the commission. So that's going to be a pointed discussion, just to let you know. I'm not going to vote to drop it from the agenda without some further consideration.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Vialobos, do we have any speakers for public comment?
Mr. Chair, all of our speakers signed up to speak for items on our standard agenda, but again, if anyone present would like to speak to items not on the agenda, raise your hand and I'll call on you. No takers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vialobos. And then we have Planning Commissioners informational reports, item eight. Do any commissioners have anything to report?
Not really. Not really. I could cackle, but I don't have to.
Very good. And then we have item nine is some minutes. We have the minutes from November 3rd.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, in reviewing these minutes, I did find a small typo, which I'll communicate to Mr. Vialobos when the opportunity presents, but otherwise, I'm going to second.
Okay. Shall we go ahead and point those out now, Commissioner Cooney?
It's easy to do. It's on page four. In the last action at the bottom of the page, first, number one, recommend that the Board of Supervisors, there's just an S missing.
Got it.
Okay, Mr. Vialobos, can we move forward with the vote, please?
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Oh, oh.
I can't believe it.
Okay.
I'm so proud that I actually read this so carefully. So is this a motion? I'm sorry, am I, okay, yeah. Are we on both November 3rd and November 10th in the motion?
No, I didn't put them together. I just, I think they're... Did you have anything on the 3rd or?
Just, just actually November 10th, so I can hold on.
Okay, let's get this vote out of the way and we'll come back to the table. Okay, so Mr. Vialobos.
Commissioner Cooney.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
I think we're still missing Commissioner Park.
I think you are correct.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Chair Farini.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, now we'll move on to the minutes of November 10th. Commissioner Bradley.
Well, I'll move for approval, and I just had one, do we wait for a second and then I do the correction, or?
Oh, just tell us now.
Okay. Hey, so on item number one, the last line in that, the statement is section 5.2 of this staff report, and I think that the proposition should be the staff report, not this, since it's a set of minutes. Page two, item one, last bullet, last line.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, very good. And...
And I look forward to the day when I can correct some error in the minutes that Mr. Cooney or Commissioner Bradley missed, but probably never happens.
We make it hard. We make it tough.
I appreciate it. I just laugh at it.
All right. And welcome, Commissioner Park. Good to see you this morning.
Morning.
We are voting on the minutes of November 10th. Okay, Mr. Vialobos.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
And Chair Farini.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, Secretary Wilson.
Mr. Chair, it's kind of my attention that, we may need to go back up to item number four. We skipped over it. I had thought that we had been in compliance with state law, making findings to remain remote, but it's kind of my attention, the last time we did it was, it'll be over 30 days by next week. So if we could make a motion to stay remote for December, that will keep us compliant with the 30 days, and then we will meet again next week to make those same findings for January. So I'm looking for a motion on item four, or...
So moved.
So moved. Commissioner Blau.
Again.
Commissioner Bradley. Commissioner Bradley, without a second?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Vialobos.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Chair Farini.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, and since we're going back in the agenda here, Commissioner Park, item eight, were you interested in giving an informational report?
Oh, yes. Last week, I brought up ag enterprise ordinance and environmental impact report scoping. And I had a very useful meeting with you, Commissioner Farini, Chair Farini, and our Director Plowman. And then the scoping hearing occurred on Monday, and Director Plowman made some excellent introductory remarks and closing remarks. And there was quite a bit of really high-quality public participation.
Look at his dog.
And then the kind of the upshot of that was that I believe Director Plowman intends to see that the scope of the project description in that EIR scoping NOP is broadened, as people asked for, and then that there will be an extension of the comment period. So there's really not a reason for me to make the motion that I mentioned last week. And oddly, a number of the speakers asked for that same thing, but it doesn't matter. I think we'll just keep going forward, and it's in good hands.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Park. Commissioner Bradley.
I just, clarification to Commissioner Park was an expansion of the comment period. You mean during the circulation period or a comment period on the NOP?
I don't know. I think there was a deadline for people to comment on the NOP of December 21. And what exactly category that falls under, stated, I don't know, but I believe that will be extended. And I'm not the person doing that. I'm just relaying what I'm told by Commissioner Plowman, I mean, excuse me, by Director Plowman, that there will be a broadening of the project description. And that gives everybody a lot more discretion to adjust this thing, and that there will be an extension of the period of time to comment. So that once people see, you know, logically, once people see the broadened project description, then they can comment on that.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Got through the minutes, so we're on to item 10. Director Plowman, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you, John, or Commissioner Park, for talking a little bit about that scoping hearing. I wanted to say a few words about it, just to confirm what he shared, which is we are going to be accepting those comments and looking at them, waiting for some written comments, and then making some adjustments based on some of the comments we received. Then we will recirculate that project description and extend our comment period to give people an opportunity to comment on that in an effort to make sure that the EIR is broad enough to give flexibility both to the Planning Commission and to the Board of Supervisors. So I thought it was a very constructive meeting, and people made very constructive comments, so it was a good exchange, and we learned some things. So appreciate the effort that Commissioner Park made to bring that to our attention, that there were some issues out there, and I think we'll be able to handle them. Yesterday, the board met, and they finally approved the Oasis project. So that project has been launched. It's been a long, winding road, but it was, I think it was a positive hearing, and so that project will be moving forward. And they also upheld the Planning Commission's approval of the Cresco cannabis application in Carpinteria and denied the appeal. And then in terms of future board items, we have the BN Nacito appeal next week, and the Santa Barbara Ranch periodic review of the Development Agreement appeal next week. And then moving into next year, we've got the Decker appeal on the 25th of January, and then an appeal of the Hacienda Amag Home State Project on the 8th of February, and the ExxonMobil appeal on the 8th of February. So those are the upcoming board dates. And I don't have a whole lot more to share this morning, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Blau. You're muted, Dan.
Here we go. Not really a question, not really a question, but maybe a comment. I don't know what it is. But just so you all know, today is the last day for the comments on the redistricting. And it's unfortunate they're having a Zoom meeting, I think, right now, or today. When we have a Zoom meeting, and it's kind of like, it's kind of messy. I don't know if you all know what's going on, but I'm no longer in the fifth district. I'm now in the fourth. So as Mr. Lovrenino, I don't know what's going to happen, but it's definitely messy. You might want to look into it. I don't know.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Here's my hand up. Sorry.
Okay, no worries. Thank you. Commissioner Park.
I just wanted to... Well, I've got to comment what Commissioner Blau commented on, and that, you know, it's very interesting. There was very substantial changes made to that map in the very final hearing. And then where does the public fit in? It's an interesting process. We do it again every 10 years, I guess. I hope it gets to be a little less chaotic, but people work really hard in that commission, and there they go. And, but the really important thing that Director Plowman and I have been discussing is our holiday Christmas party. And not going to be for Christmas, but it'll be in kind of early spring, and we'll do something outdoors at a local winery that'll be midpoint for everybody. And it's got a pizza oven, and I'll make you my well-known sourdough pizza crust homemade, and we'll have a great time. So for those of you feeling a little bereft of holiday cheer, we have more to come.
Something to look forward to.
I'll bring my dried-up Christmas tree.
I can't afford one this year.
You gotta feed all those puppies. That's right.
They destroy it anyway in 15 minutes.
Commissioner Bradley.
So I just wanted to add one thing. I think Secretary Wilson has just shared with me. He thinks that there is a December 8th meeting at 6:00 p.m., which is today, on the redistricting.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Commissioner Brad?
Maybe this is premature, but being new to the commission, when those lines are changed, I think the last map that's going into tonight's hearing has Isla Vista snuggling up to the second district, so I'm a super, super dense district now with hardly any open area. What happens, in terms of Commissioner Blau's situation where the line changed, is there a grace period where that can get worked out, or, I mean, does anybody know, or maybe this is not the place to ask the question?
I'll weigh in on that. I did talk to Supervisor Lovrenino yesterday. He's looking into it. I think the way it works is that both he and I are... I, I think the way it works is that both he and I are appointed through the end of next year, in, in order for the, in order for me to be removed from the Planning Commission takes two things. One is a three-fifths vote of the board, the other one is, just for me personally, is for Mr. Laberino to say, Dan, I want you to resign, it happened in a heartbeat, but, but the point is, I don't know, although clearly, if, if it doesn't change at the end of next year, I'm done, which is probably fine, make my wife happy. But it is really of a concern, how you, how they can split the city of Summerlin in half is absolutely beyond me, but I think it's one of those things, I've been told that as a, as a commissioner, just like Mr. Laberino as supervisor, we can't participate in the discussion, it's, it's amazing to me, so we'll see what happens, but it's going to be interesting, but, but so far, they tell me I can continue to be a planning commissioner for next year, if that changes, I'll let you know.
Thank you, Ms.
Commissioner Frini and commissioners, so that is accurate, generally, members based on district can finish their existing term, but maybe what we could do is after the final map is selected, maybe I can briefly report back to the commission on what exactly is going to happen, and if it impacts any particular commissioners, and based on the final map, we can check addresses and just see where we are.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you. Commissioner Bradley, did you have any?
No, I'm sorry, that was it, thank you.
All right, I, I think we're ready to move on to the standard agenda, and with item one, Mr. Villalobos.
Thank you, the following is a hearing on the request of A.J. Lassert, assert, I'm sorry, appellant to consider appeal of the director's decision to approve coastal development permit case number twenty-one fifty-three, and to determine the project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to state SEQA guidelines section one-five-three-zero-three.
Okay, and do we have an ex parte for any of the commissioners? Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I did have a visit to the site yesterday in the company of Beth Collins, who is the agent for the applicant, that was my only contact.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Commissioner Bradley.
I disclosed earlier conversations with both Bridget Lassert, that, you know, several months ago, but then I also spoke with both Steve Walton, the applicant's agent, yesterday, and nothing specific, just a quick phone call, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, let's move on with the staff report then.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Willow Brown, I will be presenting the Lassert appeal of the BMO LLC ADU. This is an aerial view of the proposed project site. The property outlined in red on this map is located in the coastal area of Summerland, accessed via a private easement off of Finney Street. This is a site plan of the proposed project. The project is for a coastal development permit to allow construction of a new seven-hundred-ninety-five gross square foot attached second-floor accessory dwelling unit with a one-hundred-forty-two square foot deck located at twenty-three oh-five Finney Street. The appeal you are hearing today is an appeal filed by the neighbor to the north of, by the neighbor to the north of the staff approval of the coastal development permit approved by staff for the ADU. Here are some photos of the site. The top photo shows the north view from the bluff edge, the bottom-left photo shows the west view from the eastern property line, and the bottom-right photo shows the south view towards the driveway and the front of the residence. These are elevations of the proposed project, the ADU would be located on the second story. The single-family dwelling was constructed in nineteen forty-nine prior to the need for a zoning permit, it was later expanded to sixteen hundred thirty-eight square feet without permits. In two thousand and three, a lotline adjustment, rezone, and general plan amendment were done to legalize the dwelling. On June fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, the coastal development permit for the accessory dwelling unit was approved, and an appeal was filed on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Following the appeal, the applicant submitted revised plans reducing the square footage of the ADU. The appeal letter listed ten appeal issues. The first appeal issue stated that the ADU is beyond the allowed floor area of fifty percent of the square footage of the single-family dwelling. However, the existing single-family dwelling is legal at its current size of sixteen hundred thirty-eight gross square feet, and the proposed ADU square footage of seven hundred ninety-five gross square feet meets ordinance requirements. The applicant reduced the ADU square footage after approval to meet the fifty percent threshold. The second appeal issue stated that the ADU deck was not accounted for in the ADU square footage and should require a separate permit. However, the outdoor deck is part of the ADU, but the square footage of the deck is not included as it is an unenclosed exterior space. The third appeal issue stated that the project was not properly noticed, however, notices were sent out on April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, and a placard was posted on-site. The notice appropriately gave an overview of the project and contact information to inquire further regarding project details. The fourth appeal issue stated that the project is inconsistent with policies regarding access and parking, however, there is adequate existing parking for the single-family dwelling, and no additional parking is required for the ADU. The property is legally accessed via an easement off of Finney Street, and the fire department had no access improvement requirements. The fifth appeal issue stated that the proposal does not qualify as an ADU under county regulations. However, the proposed ADU is allowed under section thirty-five dash one forty-two point seven of article two, which includes accessory dwelling units either partially or wholly within in addition to an existing single-family dwelling. Consistent with ordinance requirements, the proposed ADU will be located wholly within in addition to the existing single-family dwelling. The sixth appeal issue stated that the project is located in a special problems area and is subject to access constraints. The project is located within a special problems area and was reviewed by the Special Problems Committee. The fire department reviewed the plans which show the access easement and did not require access improvements. The seventh appeal issue stated that the ADU exceeds the allowable height of sixteen feet, however, the ADU has a vertical distance of fifteen feet, six inches, and therefore does not exceed the sixteen-foot height limit. The eighth appeal issue stated that there was a trail developed on the parcel that should have required a coastal development permit, however, enforcement staff went out to site and determined that a violation does not exist. The ninth appeal issue stated that there are violations on the subject property associated with the, with development, however, as of April twenty, April second, two thousand and twenty-one, all violations have been abated. The tenth appeal issue stated that the project is inconsistent with policies in the comprehensive plan. As discussed in detail in the staff report, the project is consistent with all applicable policies, there are adequate services on the subject parcel, there will be no impact on drainage from the proposed project, the accessory dwelling unit will be set back sufficiently from the bluff, there is adequate access and parking, and the project will comply with policies regarding air quality, cultural resources, and noise. Specifically, consistent with action bio-dash S-dash three-point-two, the project would not adversely affect butterfly roosts, and construction would be prohibited during the overwintering season between November first and April first. The appellant submitted a memo dated October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, raising additional appeal issues. The first additional appeal issue stated that the project proposes development in the designated exclusion area, however, the applicant revised the plans and no development is proposed in the exclusion area. The second appeal issue stated that the ADU will impermissibly take the development on-site from sixteen hundred square feet to twenty-four hundred square feet, however, there are no conditions of approval limiting development on-site to sixteen hundred square feet or prohibiting an ADU. The third additional appeal issue stated that the project lacks sufficient architectural review, however, ADUs are not subject to approval by the Board of Architectural Review. The fourth additional appeal issue stated that the project lacks adequate lighting, however, the applicant added lighting fixtures in the revised plans that are hooded and directed downward, complying with the ordinance requirement for lighting to be dark sky compliant. The project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section one-five-three-zero-three of SEQA, which exempts new construction or the conversion of small structures, including one single-family dwelling or a second dwelling unit in a residential zone. Given that the proposed project is for an accessory dwelling unit in a residential zone, it is exempt from SEQA. Staff recommends that your commission deny the appeal, make the required findings for approval of the project, determine the project is exempt from SEQA, and grant approval of this, of the project subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Commissioner Bradley.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, I, one question I had was on the Special Problems Committee, what was the focus of their discussion, because I guess maybe I missed that in the staff report, but can you help us understand that?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair, different departments review projects in the Special Problems Committee, just for if they have any conditions to add to the project, it was reviewed by the fire department, our pollution control district, flood, flood control, project clean water, and some other departments, building and safety, just for conditions to add to the project, and the only condition letter we got was from the fire department regarding an additional address.
Well, so why, I mean, so it was in a special problems area, so it was mapped as that, but then when it got to the committee, it was really just one district that decided to add any other conditions, it's just an opportunity for them to look at it, correct, and if there was no discussion, then I'm to assume that there was no, nothing else regarding geology, or, you know, flood hazard, or anything else that came out of that Special Problems Committee, do I have that right?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair, that's correct, there wasn't discussion of any specific issues, just a review of the project in general.
Does anybody know why it was in the special problems area? For that area, for that whole subdivision, I think?
Chair and Commissioner Bradley, if you give me just a few minutes, I can get back to you with that, I know a lot of portions of Summerland are, but I can look at our mapping and see if it specifies, a lot of properties in Summerland have issues with radon, but it could also be septic issues in that location, but we can get back to you with that information.
Thank you, sorry about that, by the way, I wanted to compliment Ms. Brown on a really good staff report, and her reaching out to me, and this is a question that came to me at eleven o'clock last night, so I apologize.
Okay, Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, if you go back to slide one, and I think you answered my question in slide nine, but you made the comment, or you made the observation, that the original footage was, the property was about a thousand square feet, and then it got to be sixteen hundred square feet, and it was unpermitted, but, but, but I think, I mean, was there a permit required back in those days when the property was enlarged? And I just do that as a comment, because I, I, I don't want appellants or people to, I didn't understand that it may not have required a permit back then, that's why in your slide nine, it wasn't an appealable issue, but was there a permit required to increase the property by the, by the five hundred square feet when the addition was done?
Commissioner Blau through the chair, it is unclear when the additions were added, the assessor's records show it as a thousand square feet in nineteen forty-nine, but the information about unpermitted additions was taken from the two thousand and three staff report, and it's not specific when the additions were done.
Okay, well, I, I agree with Commissioner Bradley's comments on your staff report, it was really quite good, just want you to know that I object to having it labeled an unpermit, unpermitted condition when there may not have been a permit required. I, I think you need to clarify that, because there's a real difference to me whether one was required, they didn't get it, or they ignored it and built it anyway, just a comment before you go forward.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I had a very nice visit with Ms. Brown, which she initiated, by the way, asking if I had any questions, and, and with her supervisor, who also is one of our most special staff members, and, and I learned a lot from that meeting, but one question I didn't get answered or didn't ask was the source of the indication that BAR is not required for this project, and is that true of all ADUs as covered by our ordinance, or is that something additional required by state law?
Commissioner Cooney through the chair, that is in the ADU ordinance, the design review is not required for ADUs, and I believe is also in the design review section of article two, that's standard for all ADUs.
And, and I believe that's also indicated in state law that local jurisdictions can't hold up ADUs for architectural reasons, and, and slow the process down through the BAR process, but it is one of the weak spots, I think, of ADUs, and, and especially here, we have one right on a beautiful part of our coast, and really no architectural control of that held by the county, so that's a concern, but, but I agree, it's, it's been, that battle's been fought. Thank you.
Commissioner Park.
I want to address the point that Commissioner Cooney just brought up, and, and while he was visiting the site, I was visiting our government code once again, which I've looked at, oh my God, how many times on, on this, because it's all in one section, all the different varieties of ADUs are described in one section of the government code, the, and I, preliminarily, I should also compliment Ms. Brown, because ADU law is so complicated, and, and this one kind of posed all the hypothetical questions one could pose on, on regulating, and where it fits here and there, and then it's progressed through the system as the ordinance changed, so navigating all that and getting it right in a staff report is, is an achievement, so good for you, but on this issue of architectural review, on the, the, the twenty-sixteen ADU law, and, and that's, was our original ADU ordinance, came after that, and our, and our current ordinance tracks some of that, there is a limited form of architectural review that had to have happened for this project to get its permit, and it's basically a determination by, by our director, whoever it's delegated to, that the, the ADU new construction is generally similar to the architecture of the basic building, and so it, it's true that it doesn't go to the BAR, but there is a determination that it's not something bizarre and new, and that's, I think that's of some importance. Now, something that I looked at here, because I was surprised that this was getting so much regulatory attention, is we have the twenty-twenty ADU laws, which in our ordinance refer to as exempt structures or exempt ADUs, and these are ADUs that are under eight hundred feet, and, and meet some other requirements, and they get absolutely no architectural view, and have extremely streamlined process, and the process we're engaging now wouldn't be available for an ADU of that size, a key thing to know in that is that applies to detached ADU units, and so this one is an attached one, it's obviously, it's, it's the second story, so that's why we're going through what we're going through, and I'm sure you'll all And I'm sure you'll all memorize that and understand it the next time we look at this, but it's worth knowing.
Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, well, having heard both Commissioner Cooney and Commissioner Park, it seems to me that we need to explore the idea of an expedited review by the BAR to comply with the allowed requirements of state law. I mean, if there is a requirement that the architecture will be similar to the existing structure, is it appropriate that we have our director make that determination? Or is there a possibility of a inexpensive expedited review by the BAR to ensure that or to develop it? I mean, I don't think that in any way circumvents what the state legislature was attempting to install, but it could be very beneficial to our constituency in the county. Interested to know how the rest of you feel about having that maybe come back to us discussing it.
Okay, so Commissioner Blau, on that, right now, the way I understood it, it's director reviewed and approved, right? So why wouldn't you leave it that way?
The reason being is that, as we've discussed earlier, I don't know that our director went to college and got a degree in architecture or art or whatever. I mean, they're basically a kind of a different kind of education. And I'm just concerned, you've got people that are complaining that, you know, the ADU is not appropriate for the site. And when we have an architectural committee review it and then determine that it is, it seems to have more credibility than a directive.
Okay. All right, that makes sense to me. Okay, are we done with staff, questions of staff? It looks like we are. We're going to move on then to the appellant presentation.
Chair Farini, if we could, we just have a few clarifying statements we wanted to add to the, okay?
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Chair and Commissioners, we just wanted to follow up on a couple of items. One of them is that the ordinance, which would have required permits for development in this area, went into effect in 1954. So there is a good possibility that the additions up to the 16, over 1,600 square feet, could have occurred prior to the need for permits. The assessor's records don't document exactly when they occurred. But Commissioner Blau is correct, they may not have required permits at the time that that expansion occurred. And regardless, permit action that occurred later on the property validated the current square footage. So as of today, the square footage of the home would be considered permitted and legal. And then the next question had, came from Commissioner Bridley, and it had to do with the Special Problems Committee. And the Special Problems Committee applies based off of a resolution that identifies that the Special Problems Area could be due to issues with flooding, drainage, grading, access, road widths, or other issues. In this particular area, the property is located in a coastal location and a bluff area, so that may be why it's located in the Special Problems Area. But there is a whole host of reasons that the various locations in the county could be located within a special problem zone.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Liu. Okay, no questions. So let's move on then to the appellant's presentation. Mr. Burke?
Yes. Good morning, members of the commission and staff. My name is Eric Burke. I am counsel for the Lacerch family, wish to present this appeal on their behalf. As a preliminary matter, may I just inquire of staff and Ms. Brown if the videos that I provided would be available to show? A couple I wanted to show just in a few minutes. Is that ready to be shown? May I just ask?
Yes, the videos are available.
Okay, thank you. So let me begin by just making an overall broad point here that this is not a situation where one neighbor simply wants to object to anything that his or her neighbor presents to the commission. As I will discuss in just a few minutes, something could work here. Some compromise could be achieved. But in our view, it is not this project. Many of you are familiar with the area. Many of you are familiar with Finney Street. I wanted to highlight a few points, and if I may just ask Ms. Brown to, at this point, to display the first video, which was the video of, I'm sorry, it would be the other one, Ms. Brown, if you don't mind. Thank you. So what we're seeing here is a drone video that was taken as part of the litigation relating to the parties. And this is a video showing Finney Street. I wanted to just highlight a few points as the commission views this video. Let me first note the obvious, the narrowness of the street and the particular issues and concerns that would normally be associated with that. The commission will notice the parking availability on both sides of the street or, for lack of a better term, the lack thereof. And there's a consideration and a concern on the applicant's behalf of where cars are going to park. That's been a historical problem on this street. What you are seeing where these cars are parked now on this private road is really the main option, the only option, that both residents and guests of, primarily guests, visitors of Finney have. We could just pause for just a moment, Ms. Brown, and then I'll have you to restart it. Thank you. As we indicated in our original June 11th appeal, we believe this is the epitome of a special problems area. My understanding is that Summerland is already generally designated as such. But drilling down even further, I would suggest that Finney Street is a problem area within a problem area. As the commission is aware, access road width is one of the defining features of the special problems area. And as we take a look at the street, as we take a look at the video, I think we have that problem considerably. As we're looking at the freeze frame here, we see at the end of the street, the white structure. This is the Lacerch home. And if we could please, Ms. Brown, continue the video. As we continue down along the Lacerch home at the end of the Finney Street, we make a 90-degree sharp left turn. And if we could freeze right here, please. Thank you. So what we have here is a considerable issue in our view as it relates to this appeal. And this is the the dedicated, indeed, ingress egress easement that the McKay's enjoy over to access, to get access from their home on to Finney Street. McKay's have historically used this parking, used this easement since they have owned the home as a parking easement to take their parking up to an additional two to three vehicles up to the point and occasionally extending to where you see the end of the green hedge, green low hedge on the right where the chain begins. This, the McKay's historically had claimed that they had a prescriptive right to use this access easement to park in additional two to three vehicles anytime that they wanted to. And the cumulative impact of that, when the Lacerts moved in, became so intrusive for them that they were really frankly required to file a court case to stop that. I've had an opportunity to briefly review the PowerPoint presentation presented by the applicant. And one point that I would respectfully take issue with is there is a comment in there that, and I am paraphrasing, that the litigation has nothing to do with this project. And I would respectfully disagree and respectfully ask the commission to consider this project in the larger context of what has been going on between the neighbors here. We do have a judgment, which is part of the official file in this matter, which has not been discussed by, in any context tying into this project. And we think that that is, that's concerning on our part. Pursuant to the court judgment and the recently concluded trial, Judge Donna Gack ruled that the applicant has no parking rights in this easement area. Judge Gack ruled and supported the Lacerch position over the objection of the McKay position that this easement is in fact a fire apparatus access road. And because of that, no parking is allowed there ever, with the exception per Judge Gack's order of very short transitory stops for delivery and service calls for both homes. UPS, Uber Eats, that sort of thing. So what we have here, commission, is we think a fairly unique situation. A situation where parking has been taken away by court order from the applicant. Parking that he has historically used to support his existing structure at a point in time prior to the time that the applicant comes before this commission and asks that an ADU be added and that the property now become even further burdened. When we discuss the parking, we still have a parking area that's been indicated in the revised plans that touches upon this circulation area that we can see on the on the screen. The space to circulate in and out of the driveway, in our view, is still extremely restricted. The parking that has been designated in the revised plans is still contributing, in our view, a great deal of awkwardness, significant concerns on our part about fire suppression and fire emergency issues and access. And I wonder if I may please ask Ms. Brown to take down this video and show the second video, if I may. And this, if I could just pause it here for just one moment, I'm sorry. Thank you. The, this second video was a video taken from the security camera of the Lacerts. This is just something that runs as part of the Lacerch security situation. And we're looking at the the parking area that the McKay's currently currently enjoy. This video was shot recently after Judge Gack's court ruling. And this depicts the applicant frankly attempting to to deal with the new reality of not being able to park its cars in the easement area. Ms. Brown, if I may ask you to play the video? Thank you. I'll I'll let the commission draw its own conclusions about what parking looks like now with the inability to park cars in the easement, even before consideration of the ADU application. One of the themes of the court case that the applicant emphasized was, Your Honor, it's too difficult for us to back out. It's too hard for us to navigate the turn from our home onto Finney Street if we can't park in the easement. We're frankly in big trouble, you know, if we can't have this parking. All arguments rejected by the Superior Court. And it's in that context that now the commission's being asked to approve an additional 795 square feet, heaped upon and already, in our view, overburdened parcel that the applicant's having a hard time dealing with parking as it exists right now. This is not a cookie cutter street, in our view. This is not a cookie cutter lot, in our view. This is a parcel where half of the parking historically relied upon has been eliminated via court order. I wanted to touch upon two or three other points briefly. We raised the issue of the Williams project in Galita, and we do think that there is some analogy here that I think is important to consider again in the context of parking. The work out there, as I understand it, was taking driveways and turning them into tandem parking spaces. What we have here is an applicant not providing any additional parking for his ADU and barely showing he can provide parking for what he has. This commission noted its concern in Williams about restricting public access to the shoreline and noted concern about, in Williams, about public parking being impacted by the applicant. And that applicant created more parking to address those concerns. This project has frankly no ability to either add parking or convert existing space to additional parking. The existing McKay permit violations, we respectfully don't believe the matter is as, is closed, for lack of a better term. We have seen nothing that indicates, to us anyway, that the additions were exempt from the requirement of permitting. Our best understanding is at least some of them occurred post 2003. The, we think that the further investigation by staff needs to be done to confirm that in fact no permits were required. Because if in fact permits were required, it raises a significant issue about why, you know, X, Y, and Z are not fixed before you go into discussion of A, B, and C. The what I indicated in the beginning about, just to conclude my comments here, what I indicated in the beginning about objecting just to object, that's not this case. Something could need our approval. A smaller project, in our view respectfully, is needed here. 790 feet, 795 feet is currently sitting, a bedroom, a kitchen, a rec area. We've got a new front porch. We've got a deck. We've got a second story right on the coast. I understand and appreciate the issues about the architectural comments that were made and the constraints that are inherent in what the commission can and cannot do about approval. But I think it doesn't require an architectural consideration that a more low-profile project makes a lot more sense here. This is not an efficiency unit that's being proposed by the applicant. An efficiency unit, for example, would mean less traffic. It would mean less parking. We could frankly accept something along the line of a studio. We could frankly accept a something along the line of a studio efficiency, the concept of a person. Not a family, we just want this to be fair to fair to all sides. This is not in our view an applicant to, I don't, I don't believe this project comports with. The notion that well, we need to support more housing and so we're going to, you know, we have a certain mandate in that regard. This is in our view, an applicant who frankly wants to add to his vacation rental options. Our our June eleventh appeal letter. Attached to you a VRBO ad and history on the property. Indicating that the property historically has been used as a short term rental, less than thirty days. This is in our view. Largely, or at least appreciably, an economic play to get more vacation people. To generate more revenue for the property and I just. One of the overriding concerns for us is how are those strangers who are living there and coming and going going to abide? By a court judgment not to park in the easement, how would? How would the commission's approval not end up? Contributing to violations of the court order? How would it not contribute to regular enforcement visits by the sheriff, the the type of thing nobody in this neighborhood wants to see? We're frankly going to have a challenging enough time going forward, I think, with the applicant making sure that there's compliance with. This court order, a court order that the applicant is a party to. It it concerns us significantly to have to consider the opening up of that and having to now. Hoist this order on an endless stream of strangers who don't know about this and frankly won't even care. If the. If the overriding goal here is to comply with affordable housing policy, if that is in fact one of the goals here, then. We believe that making units smaller, less impactful would 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 satisfy those overriding obligations and. With that, I wanted to thank the commission for its time and staff for its attention. My, our planner Kathleen Wald and I are available to answer any questions that the that you may have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I have two questions, they probably go to either Ms. Kim or Ms. Richardson. But. Let me start out by saying. If I were to see this project today at its infancy when it began, there's probably no way I would approve. The configuration of the property and the access and the easements and everything they did, so having said that. It it appears to me that based on the new state law, we don't have any. Right to turn down an ADU based on parking. I mean, as I understand it, we're not, we're not able to. Demand that they have new parking spaces for the new ADU. It's it's just, it's just like we can't impose new connections for silver or for water. I mean, the the state is telling us what we can do. Then my second question is, so Mr. Berg is telling us there is a state order. That is. Directing the use of the parking of the access. Is that, is that a concern? That we as a planning commissioner as the county need to address or is that a separate issue? So two questions for County Council.
Through the chair, Commissioner Blau, asked your first question, you're correct that state law really limits the discretion of the commission in this area and if. The application complies and the proposed project complies with the parking requirements as they're set out in the coastal zoning ordinance. Then the commission does not have discretion to deny the project based on parking. So in this case, staff has presented that no additional parking is required because it's an attached ADU. And as, I'm sorry, can you repeat the second question, I think I didn't fully.
Well, we, Mr. Berg is telling us that there is a court order by a judge. Who I assume has more authority than I do as a planning commissioner that talks about how the. Easement access parking is going to be used in the project, does that have precedent over? Our commission's ability to. Can we ignore the court order, do we, how do I deal with a judge that says you can't do this? And we're going like, gosh, I'm I'm a, you know, the state law says I can't change it. So where am I with this?
I just want to clarify that the, my understanding of the judgment by Judge Gack, it relates to the easement. And this, the proposed project does not propose any parking in that easement.
That is correct.
So I don't, I don't think it's relevant to this. Commission's decision with respect to the ADU.
Okay, so what what you're telling me is that I I don't need to deal with the court easement, that's a, or the court order, that's a different issue. And as a planning commissioner, I can't turn down the project. Because. In my view, it doesn't have adequate parking when by. By state law it does, am I right on that?
If the project complies with the coastal zoning ordinance, which which is implementing state law, then yes, you've got discretion to deny it based on parking requirements.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Park. Unmute.
There we go, got a particularly loud crow here today that. Is zoom bombing along with my dog. But Mr. Berg, I appreciate your very clear presentation. And and I agree with a lot of your points that, you know, parking is, to say it's at a premium right now, even without this ADU is is almost ridiculous, there's, it's, it's. What a mess. And and gosh, does the van have to drive backwards, that's a joke. But I I can see I could not navigate that street with my Ford F two fifty, I don't even think I could bring one of my big dogs down that street. And so it's a mess and it's going to be messier with an ADU. But. And I agree that, you know, it's it's poor planning to perpetuate this, but. We we're living with an ADU ordinance and I wonder, do you have authority that says that we have to consider this parking or lack of parking? And the same thing with the architecture, I think you raised points about, oh, my goodness, this is a. Quite a difference in architecture going from one story to two and so on and so forth, and it's probably bad planning for us to allow that, except that again, we're. Restricted under state and law and the implementing county ordinance and what we can do. So do you have authority that we can deny this project on the basis of parking and on the basis of lack of architectural review?
I do not, Commissioner Park, what I, what I trying to suggest is not that the Lasserts cannot get an ADU, but they that. That I do believe that the commission could ask the applicant to. Essentially present something less intrusive, even a smaller, a smaller project is still. Going to. Present the issues that that I've raised. But I fully recognize that presenting those issues alone would not be enough to. Just summarily deny the ability to get the ADU, but I do think it would significantly lessen the impact and and. That is one of the themes of what my clients are trying to achieve is not, they go in with eyes wide open here that. That something. Will ultimately get approved, but we believe that based on the points we raised that it should not be this something, and so I apologize for the lack of technical. Citations to that general principle, but that's the overall theme we're 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 urging here.
Well, those are appropriate concerns, but if you're going to be careful what you wish for situation, I mean. If if these folks have decided to get a what we call an exempt ADU under eight hundred square feet that's detached. Under our ordinance, they they could cram in a two story. Eight hundred square foot ADU on some part of the property with four foot setbacks, it'd probably be worse. You also referenced issues of of of. Short term rentals. And and where they would park and not really follow the neighborhood customs. And again, I'd like to point out, we've got another ordinance there and it's the home stay ordinance and that's how you do short short term rentals in the unincorporated parts of the county. And they require that ADUs are basically ADUs can't be used for short term rentals, typically what the owner will do is move into the ADU. And then rent the main property and that could occur here, but you'll have a whole nother shot at that because. Appeal and then it's renewed every year, so your your client shouldn't give up hope if they're having problems with short term rentals there. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Feeney.
Commissioner Cooney.
I'm Mr. Chair, I just, I wanted to raise a point of order, I I think we've gone way sideways, we haven't even heard from the applicant and. And so this discussion which might be appropriate at the end of of the position stated by the parties. Is is inappropriate here in my view and so I I don't have. Any questions that I wish to ask of Mr. Berg, so that's the end of what I have to say.
I I've got to agree with you, it did sound more like deliberations, so. My apologies, Commissioner Cooney. Okay, let's let's move on to applicant's presentation.
Chair Farini and Commissioners, I'm Beth Collins from Brownstein and I'm representing the applicants. I'm wondering if staff can put up our PowerPoint presentation, please? Okay, great. Next slide. So we have an applicant team here today. And we'll be able to answer any questions that the commissioners may have, I'm Beth Collins, I'm the land use attorney on the project for the applicant. Bill Wolf is the architect, Steve Welton is the land use planner and Steve Campbell is the geologist on the team, next slide. So summary of the project, as you've heard, we're asking the commission to approve a six hundred and square foot. ADU, it has a forty eight square foot access stairs and covered entry. And a hundred and forty two square foot attached outdoor decks for the ADU. Go to the next slide, I think it'll show a picture, yeah. So the upper floor there is the ADU with the exterior patio porch. And that's only accessible from inside the ADU and then the green area there is the entryway, the door that goes up to the ADU. This is all separate from the main house. And as you will see, just kind of reflecting on the conversation you all have had, you can see that it does definitely match. The architecture of the existing home, next slide. We did revise in response to the appeal and as I mentioned to you all last month, we revised the project. We moved the portion of the project that was cantilevered over the rec zone inadvertently, we moved that back, that reduced the size of the ADU by twenty four square feet inside. And reduced the size of the deck to a hundred and forty two square feet, next slide. The ADU meets all of the AD ordinance requirements, the FAR is well below the maximum, it's only nineteen thirty nine square feet, whereas the maximum. Was thirty two hundred and sixty two square feet. And no additional impervious area is created by this project, next slide. So in summary, and a lot of these themes have been hit already, either the appeal issues number or raises issues that are improper for this county and this commission to consider when approving an ADU. Or they're simply misleading, incorrect or irrelevant citations to the county code and state law. And I'll walk through them quickly and to avoid repetition. I didn't know what was going to be in the county's presentation or the appellant, so we included answers to all of them, all of the issues, but I'll flip through them quickly to. Be efficient, so next slide, starting with the first appeal letter, let's talk a little bit about the litigation. The litigation relates to extra parking. Okay, we have sufficient parking on our own property, we have two spaces for the existing house and no spaces are required for the ADU. The litigation just related to extra parking that had been historically used down on appellants property. So there is a judgment, it did find that there were no extra parking allowed on the easement and. That has actually been appealed, Mr. Berg talked about it like there was a judgment and and it was a final answer, but actually that has been appealed. So all of that litigation relates to prescriptive claims related to the additional parking. None of it is relevant here because there is sufficient parking per code and law on the existing site. Also, I would add that that judgment made it clear that there will be access, that judgment prohibited the Lasserts or appellants from blocking. The easement, now no one can block that easement, so it does actually improve the access situation to the applicant's home. Next slide. Short term rentals. So. The applicant has raised their family in this home and they live there most of the year. When it is rented, it is typically rented for over a month, sometimes the whole summer. But more importantly, short term legal rentals are legal in the coastal zone. So the issue is irrelevant and improper to consider here. Next slide. So appeal issue number one, the existing single family home is legal, how do we know that? The issue has been thoroughly considered both by the county and the coastal commission. And it was considered during the approval of a lot line adjustment, general plan amendment and rezone. With the residents in its current configuration. And I'll show you a little bit more specifics, there's been a little bit of confusion. We know for sure that both applicant's house and appellants house were constructed. Partially on county land. So therefore they were constructed without required permits because you can't get permits to build things on other people's property. So that all got cleaned up back in two thousand and three with a lot line adjustment and a purchase of the land from the county. So the county. Definitely intended that approval of those of the lot line adjustment, general plan amendment, rezone would legalize the residence as it existed back in two thousand and three. And then the county issued map clearance and completed the purchase, both of those demonstrate compliance with the permit conditions. So next slide, I'll give you even some more specifics here, it's the lot line adjustment was approved by this commission or the county's commission, planning commission. Back in two thousand and three. There were no conditions of approval that required obtaining the building permits in either the CDP or the lot line adjustment that were issued at that time. In fact, this commission made a finding. And it's a finding that you'll recognize because you make it each time, it's a required finding and it's the yellow, but I blew it up there below, so the first. Bullet is the the finding that's required and it's that the subject properties are in compliance with all laws, rules and regulations pertaining to zoning uses. Setbacks and any other applicable provisions of this article, so that's a finding that the commission had to make. And what the finding was made was although parcel two is a legal nonconforming parcel as to size and the structure. Is considered a legal nonconforming building because it was built without permits on a portion of county owned land. The purpose of the project is to remedy the situation. So this two thousand and three approval remedied that situation, this two thousand and three approval. Makes clear that the applicant's house has been constructed without permits on county land, but it was then legalized and permitted. Next slide. Outdoor deck, I can do this quickly, under the code deck. Under the code deck that's outdoors is not habitable space. So that square footage does not count toward the habitable space of the ADU. The deck is only accessible from the ADU, and it's outside the rec zone. I think if you go forward, it'll show a picture of it. Yeah. So there's the deck. All right, next slide. Noticing. Noticing was done. It met all the legal requirements. Staff covered that really well. Next slide. Parking. The zoning code, not the community plan, sets the parking requirements. The coastal zoning ordinance requires two spaces. The property provides two spaces. None are required from the ADU, so we have sufficient parking. The next slide shows that in fact, the parking is on our property. The property line is about where those shrubs are, up and down, north and south there. But it's tough to see on that picture. But in short, the parking is provided on our property. Next slide. On the ADU configuration, the county ordinance and state law both allow an ADU to be attached to the main dwelling. That's what we're doing. We're putting it on top of the existing dwelling. Next slide. Special problems area. So there was that question by Commissioner Bridley. Yes, all of Summerland is in a special problems area, and it's due to geologic issues, soils, expansive soils. There are some, I think it's radon. Those are the reasons that that, all of Summerland, it's in the community plan. And it's designated as a special problem area. The committee did review it, June 3, 2021. And the recommendation coming out of it was putting a separate address for the ADU for the fire department. So that is not an issue that supports denying the ADU. Next slide. The height, where applicants misstate the code requirements regarding height. The ADU ordinance itself requires that the ADU can't exceed sixteen feet, and we don't exceed it at fifteen feet, six inches. And the height of the whole home can't be over twenty-five feet. We're good there as well with twenty-three feet and six inches proposed. Next slide. There is a footpath. There are two of them, actually. There's one that the appellants have blocked with a fence and a shrub. That's a historic footpath that was approved during the 2003 lot line adjustment. Separately, there's a footpath that goes down on stairs from applicant's property. Those footpaths are unrelated to the ADU or the current CDP application. County staff reviewed the footpath that's on appellants', I'm sorry, applicant's property and found no violation. And in fact, the commission has approved, go to the next slide, you'll see there, yeah, the commission has approved that those existing footpaths could remain. See how it says existing stairways remain, may remain in the exclusion zone. So that's not an issue. Next slide, compliance. Staff have been out there multiple times. There are no active zoning violations on the property. There are on the neighbors, on appellants' property, has an existing zoning violation, but we do not. Next, policy consistency. So both the staff reports extensively analyzed it. And then also Steve Campbell, our project geologist, submitted a letter. So I'll go through this kind of quickly. Policy three point four, we are fully consistent because the ADU is located on top of an existing house that's located more than seventy-five feet north of the coastal bluff. Plus, there are no areas of new development because the house, I'm sorry, the ADU is actually being built on top of an existing home and impervious surface. So there's no new area of development proposed. So we are consistent with that policy. Next slide, policy three point seven. The ADU is not proposed on top of a bluff face. It is being proposed on top of an existing house, an impervious deck, so we're consistent there. Next slide. There's no adverse drainage impacts, again, because no drainage, grading proposed, no increase in impervious area. It's being put on top of an existing home and impervious deck. Next slide. GO S three. The project must minimize erosion and bluff retreat and avoid shoreline protection. Our project doesn't cause any erosion or bluff impacts and does not call for any shoreline protection or seawall or anything of that sort. So we're consistent there. Next slide. S dash three point one. Site-specific analysis. So there has been a site-specific analysis done, both in the staff report and Steve Campbell's letter. And the ADU fully complies. Does not increase risk of geologic hazard, including bluff retreat because it's located on top of an existing house and patio. The ADU does not move development closer to the bluff. There's no increase in impervious surface area and no impact to cliff retreat. Okay, next slide. This is now their second letter. Next slide. There we go. So just as a point of clarification, we are not proposing any modifications to the first-floor spa or existing deck. That seemed to be a misunderstanding in the second appeal letter. Also, as I described earlier, and as the staff described, the lot line adjustment legalized the sixteen hundred thirty-eight-square-foot home. Another point of seeming misunderstanding is that the lot line adjustment, general plan amendment, and the rezone were all applicant-driven. They were part of the sale of the residence and the transfer of the property from the county to the individual homeowners, appellants', predecessors, and the McKay's who are living, who are my clients. It was not an expansion of the homes. It was just related to the sale of the property. And the time to appeal and challenge those actions, as is stated in the staff report, has lapsed. The property has adequate parking, and the litigation is irrelevant. We talked about that. And then also on short-term rentals, not only are they legal in this county, but African, or is not doing generally short-term rentals on that property. Most of the time, they're living there or they're doing long-term rentals. Okay, next slide. There was the citation to the Playa Del, I'm sorry, the Del Playa Drive applications for ADUs in Isla Vista. We think that's irrelevant because the board actually approved those applications. But even more importantly, the situation on beach access and parking in IV is totally different than it is here on Finney Street in Summerland. This ADU will in no way impact public beach access or parking. This portion of Finney has no public beach access. There is, in fact, lots of public parking and access just next door at Lookout Park. And as a side note, and this hasn't been mentioned, the applicants actually funded beach access improvements as part of the purchase from the county back in 2005. That was the deal struck to legalize the residences and to fix the lot lines and as part of the property transfer, is the applicants put in $150,000 to mitigate beach access issues for improvements over at Lookout Park. Okay, last issue. So finally, and this was mentioned. It's important to note that although there is no design review required here, the applicant did and the team carefully considered neighborhood compatibility. The proposed ADU meets all the requirements in the ADU ordinance. So frankly, there just cannot be a reduction in size or a denial of the ADU based on that because we meet all of the objective standards, height limit, required setbacks, et cetera. The design does, in fact, complement the existing single-family home, and it is compatible with the existing patterns of development with the neighborhood. The next slide will show that. You can see the far left there is the applicant's home. And then if you look to the right, that's a two-story house. And then the next one's a two-story house, and the next one's a two-story house. And then you keep going over there, the former Longo House, that's a two-story house. And in fact, appellants' house is a two-story house. So adding this relatively small ADU onto the second story of this property is actually very compatible with the development in this neighborhood. Next slide. Any questions from the committee or the Commission? Excuse me.
Commissioner Cooney, your hands up. Commissioner Bridley.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Great presentation. I just, a couple of questions. I know there's a lot of focus on the 2003 lot line adjustment to sort of repair something that had happened. Was Mr. McKay involved at that time? Was he part of that 2003? Okay, and I think you had also mentioned that both your client and the appellants' property were developed at the same time. Was Mr. McKay, did he subdivide it, or did he lots split, or were they two different lots at the point he bought his property?
Commissioner Bridley through the chair. Great question. So yes, Mr. McKay, the McKay's were involved with the Hotchkiss's that owned it at the time in the cleanup. They were not involved in making the mess, but they were, they were involved in the cleanup of the situation. And they did participate in the purchase and sale from the county of the county property, as well as the lot line adjustment and the legalization of the stairway slash pathway that goes across appellants' property. So that was all done in the 2003, 2004, 2005 process. You know, because it was not just a county process. Then we had to go to the Coastal Commission. And that was Rob Eganoff and Susanna Elidge that did it. That was the, that was the team kind of to date, you know, all of us who have been land use geeks in the county. Good team. The dream team there. And so they all worked on that, legalizing that and finalizing that deal, not just with the county, but also with the Coastal Commission. Because all of us know, like, doing a general plan amendment to change from rec, recreational was what the county property, yeah, exactly, exactly. Good faith. You get, you get how much of a heavy lift it was and how much scrutiny there was. So it was very carefully considered back then.
And Commissioner Bridley, as Steve Welton just to further respond. You mentioned the timing of the construction. Twenty-three eleven Finney was constructed, I believe, in 1986. So it wasn't simultaneous. It wasn't by the applicant. And as mentioned earlier by staff, this house was built approximately 1949.
Okay, thank you very much. I just have one other question, too. I think, Ms. Collins, you mentioned that, is there an appeal pending on the Superior Court order of that litigation?
Commissioner Bridley through the chair. Yes. An appeal was filed on Monday for the, related to the litigation regarding the prescriptive easement. But again, that it's not really relevant here. Steph, never. I guess unless there's some sort of a conditional reciprocal easement or parking agreement or something that's part of the project description, which, or the conditions, that is not the case here. We are relying just on the parking on our property, so that litigation is irrelevant.
Okay, thank you. I think that was it for my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I kind of think I remember this lot line adjustment back then. This is in those days when I would ask Miss Black, I said, how long has this been in process? And she'd go like, ah, don't say, how long? Oh, yeah, four years. So are we a lot line adjustment to take four years? Are you kidding me? We're taking and removing a line on a map that's an imaginary line to comply with, you know, the current regulations, when it wasn't the requirement fifty years ago. So God bless you for fixing this, and I'm glad to see this maybe get over and go forward.
Mr. Villalobos, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Chair, we do have one person who signed up for this via Zoom. We do have two callers also. So after our first speak will be Steve Kiss, and after Mr. Kiss, I'll call on our telephone callers to unmute themselves and identify which item they're here to speak to. So again, our first speaker is Mr. Kiss. And Mr. Kiss has left the building. All right, so for our telephone speakers, I've unmuted both of you so we can just get through this. If you could hit star six on your phone and identify which item you're here to speak to, I'll mark that down for, if it's not this item. Again, so if you're joining the meeting via Zoom, via telephone, if you could hit star six on your phone and identify yourself and what item you're here to speak to. All right, Mr. Chair, I think we can move on. Neither caller's unmuted themselves.
Okay, very good. Now would be the time for the appellants' rebuttal. I believe, Mr. Berg.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. The only point I wanted to make, I think it was adequately covered in my, in my presentation, was that there was the the slideshow about the second story and how that is compatible with the neighborhood. I would suggest that, given the fact that this appears to be the only proposed second story that would actually impact the view of a home that is directly behind it as opposed to the other second stories, which appear to have a clear shot, if you will, and not impact homes that are located directly behind it. I would respectfully suggest that a proposed second story is anything but compatible with with the neighborhood and the desire for really all of the residents to maximize and enjoy their their ocean views. And I think with that, Commissioner, I will, I'll submit on my, on my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. And applicant, Ms. Collins.
Chair Farini and Commissioners, I just would say, as we know, views are not protected. In addition, for those of you who did have an opportunity to go out to the site, you'll see there's actually a massive shrub that grows up, and there is no real view from the neighbor's house there. And so, but regardless, it's not an issue that can be considered here. Our ADU is proposed. It does comply with all the standards. And we were really thoughtful about the way, we didn't take up the whole area. We could have made a larger ADU, as is shown by our FAR numbers. And in fact, that was not what was proposed because we did want to keep it compatible with the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then we'll move on to Commission questions and deliberations. I think most of the questions were answered. Commissioner Blau.
I don't have any more questions, so I'm prepared to go forward to deliberations unless any of my fellow Commissioners have a question.
Thank you, Commissioner Blau.
Not seeing any hands raised, I'll go forward and just tell you. This is one where I don't see where we have a lot of discretion. Not that I like that. I mean, am I happy with the legislature taking away our ability to try and, you know, massage an ADU or to find compatibility with architecture and with setbacks and parking? Not one damn bit. And I can assure you, I did not vote for one legislature that voted to pass ADU laws as we see them now. But we've got no choice. It seems here the applicant has complied with It seems here the applicant has complied with all of the laws and rules and regulations. And so I don't see we have any choice. As far as the concern about the view of the two stories, I think the applicant's attorney is correct. We don't have any ability to regulate that. I mean, I know I live in a golf course. I cannot have more than a three foot fence in my backyard by design by the developer. That's the CCNRs. Neither can my neighbor. But you can't retrospectively come back and say, I built my single story house here and I could see the ocean and you can't build a two story house. Doesn't work that way. I mean, if you were concerned about the view, you should have bought the property between you and the ocean. And then you'll have an unstructured view. So I'm prepared to approve the ADU, deny the appeal, I think is what we're trying to do here today. I'm ready to make that vote.
Commissioner Blau. Commissioner Cooney. Mike, you're muted.
I questioned the direction of the hearing before and now I really question it because this was a first district item and my fellow commissioner and longtime friend Dan Blau jumped ahead and made the motion that I would have made for similar reasons. This is really a very, very difficult site. It brings out all kinds of planning issues. It would be a good final exam question for Board of Architectural Review member to to study, but it also raises the concern we all had when we became aware of the ADU legislation that led to our our county's coastal ordinance that limits the county's involvement in accessory dwelling unit architectural review location, all of the things that we thought so important all these years really go to the side to this applicant, at least. This applicant is represented by Fine Land Use Council and planners and a number of changes were made just since the matter was submitted to the Planning Commission and I'm sure there were others before that. So I agree with Commissioner Blau and I would support the motion to deny the appeal.
And I just want to point out, Commissioner Cooney, I wonder if your hand would be raised if you didn't see it. Otherwise, I would have been quiet. So I apologize.
Commissioner Bradley.
I'm not sure if anyone else is jumping in here, but I the applicant's team is a very good one. I totally respect Suzanne Elidge's office and of course, Ms. Collins, and I'm a big fan of Bill Wolf as well. My concern on this case is the finding, 2.1 administrative finding, that there are sufficient public adequate services to serve the project. And based on what we've heard, you know, over the time since the property was practically built or the subdivision was laid out, is this is a tricky site. And this completely demonstrates how frustrated I am with state law that comes in and tells us that we have to approve these things with zero consideration of site specific constraints. I don't. I've said that before. I'm sure everybody else is concerned about the same thing, just like Commissioner Blau stated. And so I personally cannot make that finding. I do not believe that adequate services are there to serve the project with regard to parking and access. And I've been to this property about seven times in the last three months. And several times I had to back up on Finney Street and it's squirrely. When the ADU legislation came down the pike several years ago, it was this vision of how we're going to provide additional parking for our population. It could be a place where your college kid returned where your mother, you know, father-in-law were going to live for a while, or maybe you were going to rent it out to someone that was starting their career. And I don't believe that's what the need is for this owner and that's not in in front of us today in terms of findings. But I'm going out of my way to not support this motion because I think that, you know, there's one tiny finding that I can hang my head on and sleep at night that I don't really think this is the kind of property that should have an ADU. I'm pleased to hear that they both applicant and appellant sound like there's something smaller or something that could work out. But it's really not about the design or the second story or the encroachment or the legality of the building getting cleaned up. It's about transportation and parking and this site is so constrained. I just can't support it. But it, you know, I'm probably just a minority vote. So whenever Commissioner Cooney puts out the official motion, I'm not sure that he has yet. That's my thinking and those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Bradley. You know, your your conversation reminded me, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And that's kind of how I see this project going. I don't I don't see that that should be built there. It's it's obvious. There's there's a huge traffic problem, inadequate roads going by a neighbor's house through an easement. That all seems really being cutting edge all the way through. I think the intent of the legislation was to take these big lots. You look in the city of Santa Maria, you have 15,000 square foot lots in the middle of the city where it's it has plenty of on-street parking. There's just there's plenty of everything, long driveways. Those are well suited for ADUs. I'm not sure where legal counsel or or, you know, I see Mr. Wilson there, what they're going to say, but I'm inclined to vote with you on this, Commissioner Bradley, Commissioner Park.
Well, this has really gotten interesting. The I've been listening to this hearing throughout and it reminds me of what judges used to say to me when I was young, you know, don't overtry your case, meaning how far are you going to go in putting on evidence and argument on something that seems to be foreordained? And 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 we can discuss the lack of appropriate planning for this whole neighborhood, which preexists this ADU. And then the addition of this ADU and and I completely sympathize with the assertions about that. And and I should give credit as well to the applicant for, I think, being as you know, responsive to design concerns as as they could and should be. And 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 I thought that we basically had a case, and I still do, where I almost wonder why we're having a hearing because I know the parties want to to make this all work, but there's really so little discretion here for the Planning Commission for appropriate issues. So so what's kind of amazing me is is now the third district again becomes a swing vote on a on an ADU project in the first district. It's it's just really kind of remarkable. And but given that responsibility that I didn't expect to have, I will support the motion. I think there there are some important planning issues. They did predate this project. I would point out that the ADU law has basically been supported and pushed by some of them Weiner up in in the Bay Area. And it's a it's it's been pushed very hard by Bay Area legislators. And you think we have tight, screwy little neighborhoods here and there in Santa Barbara County, go up to San Francisco and 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 look at that. So that's what these folks had in mind when they did this is is damn the torpedoes, full speed ahead. We don't care about parking in neighborhoods. We don't care about aesthetics. We don't care about all that. We're going to cram these ADUs down your throats. So given that's the nature of the law, I'm I, like I said, will support the motion.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Park. So I do we have a first and a second? Was it Blau made the motion? Did we get a second?
Actually, I did not make the motion. I was just commenting as a deliberation. It's up to Commissioner Cooney to make the motion. However, once he makes it, I will second it.
Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Blau. I interpreted your your position and agreed with it from a legal standpoint as a motion, but for the record, I will make the motion. Let me get to the actual motion recommended by staff was clear back on our original staff memo when the hearing date was November 3. It's maybe Mr. Wilson has a comment before I make the motion.
I'm sorry, Chair Farini and Commissioner Cooney, just there was recommended motions that were provided in the memo that I think it talks about some maybe potential revisions, but I think I recommend using the motion that's in the memo dated November 30. That's on the website for today's hearing. It's at the bottom of that memo.
I see it. Thank you. So I'll go ahead and make the motion based on the memorandum. Hearing date is December 8 today. Deny the appeal. Make the required findings for approval of the project. Case number 21 CDP 00053 specified in attachment A of the staff report dated October 7, including the subsequent findings. Determine that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15303A and grant de novo approval of case number 21 053, subject to the conditions of approval included in attachment B of the staff report dated October 7, 2021, as revised in the staff memorandum dated November 30, 2021.
And I will second that.
Commissioner Park, did you have some comment?
No, sorry.
Okay, all right.
I can't see my cursor in the sunlight.
All right, Mr. Villalobos, can we have roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Cooney.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
No.
Commissioner Park.
Hi.
Commissioner Blau.
Hi.
Chair Farini.
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Villalobos. Okay, let's take a 10 minute break and then we'll come back for the next item.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don't have the ability to do so. And I do know that we have a couple of people. I think Renee is one of Renee O'Neal, one of them, this was Clarion, one of them. That were objecting to this project. And now, although. They may or may not have the right to a comment on it. The appeals no longer before us. And. The the project's approval is now beyond the point in time. When anybody else could appeal it. So I just have a problem. Um, well, first off, let me also back up and say. I find the appeal process to be easily abused, not normally. Here, but because it's so cheap to appeal on a project. I think a lot of appellants do it just to frustrate. An applicant or frustrated project. And I find that abhorrent, however, having said that, there are reasons. That an appeal should be heard and maybe a project modified. So I really don't know where to go from here. I'm I'm not going to support. A vote to drop your project from. Uh, the agenda. I I don't think that's appropriate. And I really think that we county council, the the board. Needs to review that process. Because because I can tell you right now, if I were applicant's representative. I'm going to appeal every damn project they apply for. That way I can drop it 10 days later and nobody else can appeal the project. That's the kind of appeal that I I want to make sure we don't have happen. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Cooney.
I, this is another case where Commissioner Blau has identified. A flaw in the system and there's no doubt of that. I, I really believe though that this. Uh, concept of filing an appeal and dropping it and foreclosing. Further discussion of it is. Something that we could discuss, but it would, it would take a a major change in the. County's procedures to. To make it improve to the point where. A new appeal period opened up to in in case it was settled, in which case. The applicant or the appellant, whoever is is wanting to settle the case would refuse to do it. Because the of the possibility of additional appeals, so. You know, there is legal precedent for settling cases and cutting off. Uh, further litigation, and I think this is in the same vein. So I really feel that. That the appropriate thing to do is to follow staff's recommendation. Acknowledge that the appeal has been dropped and and therefore the. Uh, planning commission has no further jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Director Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I did want to say just a couple of things that I I. Agree with the reflections provided by Commissioner Cooney and also wanted to note that. Multiple people can file appeals on a particular case. And because the bar is relatively low, it doesn't prevent them from doing that. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the advantage of the way that system is set up now. I also wanted to note that we do really try and get people to work things out. Before they get to a decision maker, for instance, we have the mediation options between. A planning commission and a board appeal with the hopes that we can get. People to cooperate and revise their projects or make changes or. Uh, that they that can resolve their differences of opinion. So I I understand Commissioner Blau's concern. We haven't seen the system abused in that way, um, which I'm glad to say. But I I agree with what Commissioner Cooney said is that that there may be a a little crack in the system here, but. It would take a change in how we. What our code says about appeals and the, you know, the appellant does have the right to withdraw their appeal if they if they wish to.
Okay, thank you, Director Plowman. Commissioner Park.
You know, I I think that Commissioner Blau has raised a very interesting point. And I've I've actually thought about it a whole lot and discussed it with people. In other projects, it's it's come up before. And someday we'll have to address it. I I I think that the law of unintended consequences places. Uh, an unusually large role in the planning world. And I think the unintended consequence we're going to get here when people wise up is. You won't see one appeal of a project, you'll see 20 or 30. So that every one of those persons that that opposes a project feels they have a voice. In in what happens to it. And so, once you start seeing the that large number of appellants. Resolving these is going to be a lot harder from the informal mediation point of view, and it's going to be a big pain in the neck. Uh, on the formal point of view when things get to the commission, but that'll be something in the future. I think also what happens. When they're done the way they're happening now. You'll see changes in a project. But they're not. Changes that we see, they're not changes in a project description, they're not changes of conditions of approval. People, the 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 applicants resist that because they don't want to face still another appeal. As things are altered and then presented to the planning commission. So you get a lot of private agreements and. You know, just how enforceable they are and how they're going to work. Is going to be pretty interesting. There's a lot of things that. You know, Commissioner Cooney and I have seen that are are settlements, and these are things that have been litigated for 100 years. And you kind of know how they're going to come out. This cannabis stuff, you don't have any idea how those things will come out. And I predict we'll see litigation over some of these settlement agreements and. In two, three, four years, we'll start having people trying to do something different. So we'll address it somehow someday, but today we have certain rules there in in effect. And this seems like a a motion that merits support, given where we are, so. Given if I can remember which project it is that it's in my district, I will make that motion. To approve the withdrawal if such a motion is required.
Such a motion is required, so.
Well, then there I've made it unless somebody already made it while I was delayed getting back on this call.
Okay, Commissioner Blau.
Um, well, I'll, I I don't know if you should wait for a second or just comment. I don't think it's that difficult to change the rules. When we're talking about appeals are being dropped. By example, I'm happy to wait until. We take any public comment. On the appeal to determine if there is. Uh, sufficient reason not to drop the appeal. So so by example, if we were to end up with. You know, six or seven public commentators, and they have some information to give us that would. Have us pause on the director's approval of the project, so be it. I I I'm just. I'm I'm concerned about unintended consequences. And to, like I say, have an appeal and then have it dropped by the appellant. And there is a dozen, two dozen, 50 people out there. That are opposed to the project. But didn't know they needed to appeal it themselves in order to oppose a project. Gravely concerns me. Look, we all know what the rules are because we deal with them every day. But that's not true of the general public. And I think there's a lot of them out there that think that. You know, the project is going to come before us, is controversial, it could get reversed. They don't know they have to spend the. Whatever the $200 or $500 is to also appeal the project bothers people. All I'm saying is that. I I just think we don't need to automatically drop the appeal from the agenda. Just because the appellant and the applicant privately agree to. Some other change in the project. I'm not going to say anymore about it. If I can't get the rest of the commission to agree. Uh, and and bring it back to us at a future date with the recommendation to board. I'm 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 okay with it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cooney.
I was just going to second to Mr. Park's motion.
Okay, well, it's good discussion and we have a lot on our plates right now, but let's keep that one. On the sidelines for a while and maybe bring it back up later, Commissioner Blau. Mr. Vialobus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just for the record, I didn't have anyone sign up for public comment on this. Commissioner Cooney.
Hi.
Commissioner Bridley.
Hi.
Commissioner Park.
Hi.
Commissioner Blau.
No.
Chair Farini.
Hi.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay, well, let's uh, let's move on to item three, Mr. Vialobus.
Uh, thank you. The following is a hearing under request of the county planning commission to receive a staff report regarding the outcome of the county's sea level rise. Local coastal program amendment, case number 17 GPA four and 17 ORD 15.
Okay. Uh, is staff ready to go?
I think we might need a minute, Mr. Chair, to get staff on the line.
We're we're ready.
Okay.
Yeah, good morning, Chair Farini. Members of the commission, this is Dan Clemens. We're ready to go whenever you are.
We're we're ready for you, Mr. Clemens.
All right, well, good morning again. I'm here just to give you a debriefing on the status of our sea level rise local coastal program amendment, or LCPA. As I'll be referring to it throughout the remainder of this presentation. So just as a way of background, history of this project starts in 2014 when the county received certain grant funds and authorization. To implement this project, which consists, basically consists of two phases. The first phase consisted of developing a vulnerability assessment, which involved mapping out. Various sea level rise scenarios and then identifying hazards that would result from those scenarios. And then the second phase consisted of developing sea level rise policies and programs that would be adopted as part of our local coastal program. To address the hazards that were identified in the vulnerability assessment. So we received actually a few grants to fund the vulnerability assessment. The most significant one came from the California Coastal Conservancy. And the coastal commission staff themselves actually administered that grant on behalf of the coastal conservancy. And I bring that up because the story I'm going to tell you today, this is not. One of bureaucrats who are isolated in their silos, who are not communicating. We have been in almost consistent contact with coastal commission ever since the inception of this project, so. Um, it's it's a matter of disagreement over policy, as I'll get to in a sec. So we finished the first, the first, I'd say, significant. Uh, part of this project when we got the board to adopt the sea level rise local coastal program amendment in December 2018. And we submitted that, the application for the LCPA in January 2019, and then that started and. Continued negotiations, but now over the specific application that the board authorized us to submit. And I want to explain just our role as staff during the negotiations. Prior to a board, the board adopting an LCPA, we really don't know for certain what the board will accept when we're in a situation where the coastal commission staff. Are proposing alternatives to what at least we're recommending. And also, the coastal commission staff are going to be reluctant to provide any definitive direction prior to seeing what the board actually adopts. So when we submit the actual application, which occurred, as I said, during January 2019. There's more negotiations because now we can get more specific guidance and feedback from the coastal commission staff that they previously would not provide us, so. This started roughly about a two-year process of negotiations. It's not that we were active during that entire time because. The coastal commission actually processed this and started some fits. But it did take about two years. And what we found was we got to a point where there were some fairly fundamental policy disagreements between. What the board adopted and what the coastal commission staff were requesting be added to the board adopted LCPA. So when we were considering. Continued activities on this project for the current fiscal year work program. Um, we ran out of money because negotiations took much longer than we anticipated, took additional work. But then also because of other priorities in the work program, the board did not fund continued activities on the LCPA for this. Current fiscal year and instead say, hey, let's hold off on this, let's focus our resources on those other priority projects. And then the board ultimately has the authority to put this back into the work program during the next fiscal year. So the board took that action. Um, in June and the the fiscal year begins in July 1st. And then on in August, we were notified by the coastal commission staff that they said they would not allow our LCPA application to just expire. They said that we either had to formally withdraw it. Or they were going to take it to hearing for consideration in September with their modifications. Due to the timing of that, Director Plowman did not have. The luxury of going back to the board to get direction from the board with regard to this important decision. So she did get enough direction from the CEO and certain board members to feel that. There was sufficient support for us to withdraw our application. And you can, the letter which formally constitutes that withdrawal was submitted to you for this workshop today. I should say this here in this discussion right now. So what you can do now is kind of follow along in that letter. Uh, but what we'll see in that letter is that there were, depending on how you count it. There are 20 modifications to the board's adopted sea level rise LCPA. That coastal commission staff was recommending. I say how you count it because they're multi-parters, so there's actually more than 20 requests in there. But out of those 20, we, that is staff, supported four of those, either straight out the gate without changes or after negotiations with them. We were able them to revise them such that we, at least staff, could support them. However, 16 of them, we felt would have to be revised in some fashion in order to garner our support. And out of those, what you can do is you can kind of break them down into six general areas of disagreement, and they involve 12 of the suggested modifications. So the first area of disagreement involved suggested modifications four, 11, and 13, and once again, I'm just following along in that letter if you want to refer to that. And it specifically involves Public Resources Code or Coastal Act Section 30235. In this section in general, it says. Um, in situations where there is no environmentally superior alternative. We shall allow shoreline protection structures to protect existing development. So what's important with that is number one, you got to demonstrate that it's the, there is no environmentally superior alternative. So basically, this is the last resort sort of option. You've demonstrated that there's no other way you can protect existing development by more environmentally benign means or methods. Therefore, you have to allow the shoreline protection structure. So what's also very important with that is the definition of existing structures or more generally existing development. Because the coastal commission staff takes a very limiting definition of existing structures to be only development that existed as of January 1st, 1977. That is, the effective date of the coastal act. The board adopted LCPA would have defined develop, existing development as of the effective date of the LCPA, and the reason why they're choosing that date is because. Any new development going forward would be designed such that it shouldn't require shoreline protection structure, so you shouldn't need going forward, but for existing development. We do want to make sure that future policymakers and decision makers. Have that option in their tool chest when confronted with the hazards that may occur. In other words, we want them to have as many policy options to address the hazards that may befall us in the future. So when we got to a point where we couldn't agree on what the existing development definition should be. Coastal commission staff proposed just staying silent on the matter. We didn't support staying silent for a couple of reasons. First off. The basic objective of this project was to provide clear guidance to everybody who gets involved with sea level rise. Development, uh, development that's subject to sea level rise hazards. What our standards are going to be going forward. If you stay silent, that's going counter to the objective. You're not make, you're not revealing what the expectations are. It's it's the status quo, what we're currently doing right now. So that's unacceptable to us. And then also, this is a very important policy issue. And when we're given the opportunity to, you know, provide guidance, we definitely should take that opportunity. So this was unacceptable for. To receive a recommendation from staff. The next area of disagreement involved modification 15, and it also involved Coastal Act Section 30235. And coastal commission staff wanted a requirement in our LCP that stated that. Uh, whenever we issue a coastal development permit for a development that is subject to sea level rise hazards. Property owners would waive their rights to future shoreline protection structures. Now, we feel that's inconsistent with the intent of Coastal Act 30235, and for the same reasons I explained earlier. We don't want to take away future decision makers' options and property owners' abilities to. Deal with sea level rise hazards, especially given that we truly don't know where, when, how, and to what extent it will actually occur. The next area of disagreement involves suggested modification 19, and. This one included a request that our LCP include a requirement that. Any CDP coastal development permit for shoreline protection structure would be reassessed every 20 years. Um, we were not supportive of that for a couple of reasons. Number one. Typically, CDPs do not have time limits. They're not conditional use permits. They run with the land, so. Um, this would be unprecedented, it'd be a first, and would kind of upend how we had been treating CDPs historically. And second, we believe that the time to reassess when a shoreline protection structure needs to be revised. Should be based upon actual on the ground, or should I say, in the water, conditions. Not arbitrary timeframes. Um, these structures may become obsolete 2, 3, 5, 15, 20, 25 years, we don't know. Um, and we don't want to arbitrarily set timeframes. By which you need to go back and reassess these, especially if they're going to be ineffective for ensuring that these structures are effective in addressing sea level hazards. The next area of disagreement involves suggested modification six and 14, and the coastal commission staff wanted to include a. Minimum across the board standard for development on bluff tops, and that would be a setback from the bluff edge of 25 feet. When we saw this, we asked the coastal commission, on what basis are you establishing this 25-foot setback? I mean, is there some sort of engineering or scientific reason? And they made it clear, it's only for the purpose of certitude and making them feel comfortable that there will be. Some sort of setback, but it's not based upon any scientific, engineering, or other reason. And our position and the way the board's LCPA was adopted. Is that you would conduct site-specific geological analyses. To determine what is an appropriate setback for development. And that is subject to the chief building officials' review, Mr. Craig Johnson. And he would have the discretion to determine what is the appropriate setback, and we think that's a more effective and practical way of dealing with this issue. The next area of disagreement involved suggested modifications two, three, and six. And I want to clarify, staff is supportive of using best available science, and in fact. Our recommendations all along in the board adopted LCPA. Included provisions for when best available science becomes available, that is, it changes the standards. It provided measures for how we would thereby go about changing our regulations to reflect that new best available science. If you read the coastal act, there is only method, one method or procedure by which you could change such an important standard in your LCP. That is, the local coastal program amendment process. Um, but we do not have the authority to just. Unilaterally adopt a standard without amending our codes to reflect those new standards. So when we saw this recommended modification, we specifically asked the coastal commission staff. What was their expectation? When best available science becomes of, uh, becomes readily available. And we see that our current standards are not consistent with it. Their expectation is that we would, at that point, go ahead and start using best available science. Without amending our local coastal program to reflect those new standards. Um, so we thought that was inappropriate for a couple of reasons. Number one, we don't think it's consistent with the coastal act and the LCP amendment procedure set forth in the coastal act. And number two, most importantly, from the county's perspective. That would cut out the board's discretion when determining what that standard is. We believe through the LCPA process, there's a very important role that the board plays in adopting what the standards are. And that's not to say that the board would disagree with coastal commission staff's assessment of best available science. But that authority should reside with the board, not with the coastal commission. So for those reasons, we couldn't accept these modifications. The other area of disagreement involved modifications five and 15. This is similar to some of the issues I discussed earlier, and. This is, this modification involved a request by coastal commission staff. To include a requirement for the removal, relocation, or modification of development. If new shoreline protection is required. We, once again, we don't believe that that is a wise approach to dealing with sea level rise hazards, given all of the unknowns. We want to make sure that policymakers have. The full range of policy options available to them to address whatever hazards we're confronted with. And we think this unduly limits property owners' abilities to protect property. And ultimately, public health and safety. So we weren't supportive of this set of modifications either. Okay, so what do we do now? Director Plowman, along with representatives from the board of supervisors, are currently in negotiations with coastal commission executives. Namely, Jack Ainsworth. And we're going to continue to try to negotiate to find some sort of compromises on these policy disagreements. As you're also probably aware, the state legislature recently adopted a new Senate Bill 1, and that established a new California Sea Level Rise State and Regional Support Collaborative. And this collaborative is going to be tasked with developing administrative guidelines to. Guide local jurisdictions' development of sea level rise policies as part of the local coastal programs. I gotta admit, I have mixed feelings about this. I think it's good in the sense that I, it's great to provide that guidance, and it shouldn't be done on a one-off jurisdiction-by-jurisdiction basis. However, I got to say, when the coastal commission has adopted administrative guidelines in the past. It has resulted in confusion with regard to how we are to apply and interpret those guidelines, because. Very often, the coastal commission staff will expect us to interpret these guidelines and apply them as if they are adopted law, that is, part of the Public Resources Code or something else. When in fact, they're only guidelines. So it becomes tricky when determining, okay, how far do you push them and how much can we rely upon them when placing certain requirements on new development? There's also existing administrative guidelines. For example, there was a recently published. Set of guidelines for critical infrastructure involving transportation facilities, at least for those projects, we'll take a look at those. But ultimately, what we're going to be doing is what we're doing right now, and that is. Based upon what we can glean from past appeals and what we have heard from coastal commission staff with regard to their expectations. We can advise applicants as to what we think they might do. And encourage them to go ahead and design their projects. Based upon the calculation of you might be appealed if you don't design your development, which meets at least their expectations, so. So ultimately, what I would say is I I think it's highly likely that the board will give us funding to continue with it with this project. It's very important. We want to continue it. Want to finish it, that is. And so when we develop the work program, which we've started this month for the next fiscal year. We will provide an option to the board to provide additional funding to continue with these activities. So with that said. Just really quick, just recommended actions, just to sum it up, unless you have something else before I I state the recommended actions, Director Plowman.
I was just gonna make a few reflections about our, the work we've been doing with other jurisdictions, so go ahead and finish, and then I'll I'll close it out.
Got it, we'll make it quick. Some of my recommended actions to you are just. Receive this report that I provided to you and provide any comments. Um, and then find that your actions today are not a project that is subject to environmental review under SEQA, pursuant to state SEQA guidelines 15378B5.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Director Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Dan, I appreciate the thorough. Presentation that you've given to the planning commission, and I wanted to just. That we did have pretty extensive conversations with other jurisdictions that were experiencing the same issues that we are. With our sea level rise revisions to the LCPA. And there have been a few other jurisdictions that have actually withdrawn. Sort of citing the same sections of the of the coastal act. Or the same types of modifications that were being proposed for their regulations. Um, it's, it is particularly challenging. To deal with these kinds of differences in the process that's set up with the coastal commission. Um, when we went and actually withdrew the, the amendments. the amendments, the commission made a lot of comments about how it's very important to bring our concerns to the commission so that they can be heard and considered. But if any of you have ever been to a coastal commission hearing, it's not really an environment where that happens. It's a very rushed process. You maybe have a few minutes to speak, and then they make their decision. So I shared, in public comment, I shared my thoughts about that, and indicated that their process needs to be revised if they really want to have an open discussion about differences of opinion. The conversation that we had with Mr. Ainsworth, the executive director of the commission, I thought was productive. We are still waiting to continue that work with him and his staff, and we expect that that will happen over the next few months. They're quite busy, obviously, but they're interested in seeing us complete this process, because I think we all want to be prepared for what's to come. And we don't, there's no guarantees what's going to happen. It may go, the sea level rise may be higher, it may be lower, but we definitely want to have policies in place that allow us to adapt and be ready for what comes. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Dan will be available for any questions as well. Oh, there is one more thing I wanted to indicate. This question about existing development and how that's defined, that is a sore point for almost every jurisdiction that we've spoken to. And there seems to be a sentiment that maybe it's going to be something that the state legislature has to take up. As we've indicated to the commission, it's like, you really can't change the coastal act or redefine the meanings in the coastal act, jurisdiction by jurisdiction. That's not the right way to do it. And that's what they've been attempting to do. And so we hope that the state legislature will address this issue and put it to bed for once and for all, and there'll be clarity for everybody who's working with the commission.
Okay, thank you, Director Plowman. Commissioner?
Is that Commissioner Bark or Park?
All right. Well, let's go to Commissioner Bradley.
My dog is napping nearby. That isn't always the case. So, wow, Director Plowman, I so empathize with what happens at the coastal commission. Unless you've been through it, you don't understand really how high the bluff is to get to a buildable envelope with your plans, right? So when you said that the coastal commission was encouraging you to have direct access to the commission, has the county in the past made outreach to individual commissioners to try to sit down and have one-on-one talks with them? Because they're not as publicly accessible as we are at the county, and staff control so much of what they are fed and understand and evaluate, I almost feel like it's 90% staff and 10% commission, at least in the times I've had to go through them. So I'm wondering what, I mean, does the county have ideas about how to reach out to the direct commissioners based on that? Because if they hear from you and other agencies that are particularly concerned about this existing development definition, and some of these things which are, frankly, taking land use control away from the county, because they always think they can do it better than us. I mean, that's essentially their starting point. Well, how do you see working around that or working through it?
Well, that's an interesting question. Commissioner Bradley, through the chair. We did meet with our representative. So we spoke with Megan, and I'm blanking on her last name.
Harmon.
Harmon, thank you. Harmon. We did talk with her, and she did, she was able to represent some of our concerns in the meeting, which was helpful. But you're right, it's particularly tricky with the other commissioners, and a lot of them don't want to meet in advance. So, you know, we will look at that angle. We are fortunate in that we have Supervisor Hart, who actually sat on the commission, who can help us do outreach to those other commissioners. But I think kind of the most effective thing at this point has been to take some actions that really get their attention, like the withdrawal. I mean, nobody wants to do that, but it's very hard to get their attention. And Santa Barbara County withdrawing its sea level rise, LCPA got their attention. Some of the other jurisdictions that have withdrawn or might be perceived by the commission as less friendly to these types of policies, and so they might have sort of blown them off a little bit, or disregarded it as, you know, difference in politics. But when Santa Barbara County takes a step up and does that, it means something, right? There's a problem with the process, and there were actually a couple of commissioners, Commissioner Padilla reflected on that, and I think one other commissioner acknowledged that, okay, I think there must be a problem with our process here. If an agency that's typically more, would be more favorable to some changes like these, is having difficulties. So I don't have a single plan of attack. In working these things out, we'll just have to go on a case-by-case basis. And Commissioner Harmon has been very open to working with us and helping us on issues where we have problems.
Yeah, I just have one other question, which was something I totally forgot.
Should maybe Commissioner Park can go now.
Let's just move on to the next person.
We'll come back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Park?
I have one specific question, just for clarification, and then sort of a general question, two. The specific one, and it goes to Mr. Clemens' presentation on the very first modification, if we go back to that one. And it's about, it's the one that I think is maybe the most important, I don't know. It's one that talks about existing structures and shoreline protection devices. And I couldn't understand who took what position. So I kind of thought I heard that if you have an existing development, and there's no other alternative, then you shall allow a shoreline protection device. Is that what I heard?
Commissioner Park through the chair. Right now, there's a section in the coastal act that basically gives people the right to shoreline protection for existing development. And so what we are, what the commission was saying was, well, we define existing development as anything that existed prior to 1977. So that means anything that had been built from 1978 to today doesn't have any right for any shoreline protection, even though it's the last resort. That's what they're trying to propose. And what we have argued is that's not really how it's been interpreted over the years. And in fact, we even have a legal memo that's saying that the coastal act does not, was not written to exclude development post-1977 from potential shoreline protection. So it's a debate that is not going to be resolved, I think, between jurisdictions and the coastal commission. It's going to have to be something the state addresses. But we have taken the position that we want people to be able to protect their property, and we had wanted a date of the adoption of our LCPA, is that anything after that would not be considered existing development, but anything before that would be, because things that are developed post that will be designed and adapted to accommodate for future sea level rise. That's the idea. But there have been many, many structures that have been built between 1977 and today that would be at risk. So that was the, that's the position that we had taken. I don't know where the legislature will go with that, but almost all jurisdictions are in alignment with what our position is. Is that more clear?
Yes. So the debate isn't one between the commission staff and us as to whether there should be a right to have protection structures if there is this situation of no other alternative. It's just which developments qualify for having that right.
Correct.
I don't even favor having that right, but that's in the coastal act, so there you go. Okay, so let me move on to my more general questions. I know in this county that the city of Carpinteria, the city of Santa Barbara, and probably the city of Galida spent a lot of time on their own coastal resiliency-type ordinances, and they came to sometimes different conclusions on when sea level rise would occur and all this and that. But anyway, they put a lot of independent effort into it. Did they withdraw as well? Or where are they in that world?
So the city of Galida, Commissioner Park through the chair, is currently in their process. So they have, they're not, they haven't gone as far as we have. They have been involved in our conversations, and so they're aware of the concerns that we have. The city of Santa Barbara accepted the coastal commission remaining silent on that matter, which is what they had proposed as a compromise. So, but they still have another, I think they still have some more amendments to their LCP, and this issue will be addressed in the future. And I don't know about the city of Carpinteria. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure where they are. They were not part of our call. But I can tell you, like, the county of Marin, the county of Santa Cruz, the county of Ventura, the county of San Luis Obispo, they are all in conversations with us and some of the city jurisdictions about this issue in particular.
Let me ask you a question on my most general concern. I remember when we did our coastal resiliency ordinance, and I was very impressed, by the way, with how well organized it was. And the concern I have is not that sea level rise is happening tomorrow, and I know people will debate about sea level rise and how much, but I think the immediate thing to, that requires addressing, and I'm glad we did it, was, okay, with some of these big projects coming through, and some of them are big projects, it's just one structure that's getting tremendous amount of renovation. I was involved in litigation of one off Paderau Lane. It's a very large valuable structure, and it's exposed to the sea from actually three sides. And I can't, and there's no way that structure would have been renovated the way it was under, now that our coastal resiliency ordinance would be in effect. So these, to me, that's the emergency, is addressing some of these projects right now, as opposed to that the flooding's going to occur right now. And so my concern is that if we withdraw, then are we, we have nothing in effect then to regulate these things that isn't any different than what we had years ago? And I really have a concern about that. I mean, I think your, all your positions are better than coastal staffs, but you know, the closest thing to medieval feudalism is the power that the coastal commission has over local government right now. And, you know, so I'm not really optimistic. You'll make a lot of headway in convincing anybody of relinquishing their somewhat arrogantly asserted authority. So I guess my concern is, is this, you know, as the cliche goes, perfect can be the enemy of the good, in that we're not going to get exactly what we want, but then we're kind of totally unregulated in the meantime. So how will this come to a conclusion where we get some regulation?
Commissioner Park through the chair, and Dan can add to this as well, if he wishes, Mr. Clemens. But I think we are all aware of the point you're making and have the same concerns. We would like to see these policies put in place. We do currently work with projects to make sure that they can adapt to future sea level rise. So it's not as if people are building like they did in 1977. They are addressing those kinds of future changes. So we do have the ability to work with them on that. And I have seen several projects that have raised their foundations or done whatnot, you know, among Paderau or further south. But there will be some compromise, I believe. And it may not be that we get every last thing that we want, but I believe the board has an interest in seeing this revision to the coastal program move forward, and that they're willing to let some things go, but not let other things go. So that's my general sentiment that I have now. I haven't, you know, we haven't had an open session, meeting with the board yet, but there are, I have talked with the CEO about it at length, and then, of course, we had the meeting with Mr. Ainsworth. And I think really there is motivation to get this thing adopted sooner rather than later. We don't want that work to be wasted. It was a lot of work, and staff really put a lot of heart into it. And so I think you'll see it back sooner rather than later.
Yeah. And Chair Farini, Commissioner Park, in addition to what Director Plowman said, I think, to get to your question about the immediate need for current projects that we're evaluating, I think it's interesting that the coastal act has not been amended since its original adoption in any significant way with regard to the policies that give us the authority to take into consideration sea level rise when defining, well, designing development appropriately. I mean, coastal act, Section 30235, it hasn't been significantly amended, but that is giving us the authority right now to address it. So in other words, we don't have to adopt any standards or any guidelines right now to start enforcing and address sea level rise, but it is very helpful from a business practice, a customer service orientation, to provide certainty and guidance as to how we're going to do it. So we can go ahead and regulate, and that takes me to my next point. Applicants are also, I mean, they're going to be smart, and they're going to say, okay, even if I satisfy the county's apparently lower standards than what the coastal commission is going to apply, I'm still going to have to get through that appellate process with the coastal commission. So what most often happens is appellants, excuse me, applicants design their projects to meet that higher standard to avoid the appeal. So it's de facto getting enforced, in other words.
So we, in essence, have authority to do what we need to do on a sort of an ad hoc basis for the time being. It'll be better when we have an ordinance that's fully adopted and respected, but for now, we can, we can regulate these things on an ad hoc basis and get where we need to be.
Exactly. And that's why, when I was discussing the administrative guidelines, they can be problematic at times, because when those guidelines come into play, and they differ from the actual statute or law, it can create confusion about, okay, how far can we push those guidelines? So that's why you should always go back, and like Director Plowman said, really, the solution is, we need to go back and amend the coastal act to say, hey, if this is how we're supposed to interpret it, make sure it clearly states that.
Okay. Well, thanks for that point.
Okay, Commissioner Blough.
Well, so your last slide that I saw from staff was asking us to comment, and I'm not sure if we're making a recommendation to the board or not, but it looked to me like one of the issues that the board needs to wrestle with is allocating additional funds for the program. Did I get that correct?
Commissioner Blough through the chair. Yeah, what I was saying is that one opportunity for the board to give us the assignment and the resources to continue with this project is as part of the work program development for the next fiscal year. They could give us, they could decide to give us the authorization as part of that.
Okay. And I'm not sure that the commission is going to prepare a formal recommendation, do we vote on or not, but you know, my concern is that there is no friggin' sea level rise that's occurring. I know when this came up, what, two or three years ago, I asked a question, what is the sea level rise of the last 100 years? And I got the usual answer, no. They had no idea. So I did my own little research, and I found that the last sea level rise of the last 100 years is maybe three inches. And that was a guess. And so what's the science for sea level rise being two or three feet, or whatever it's going to be, next 100 years? Well, it's funded by, you know, scientists, and the only ones that predicting sea level rise are the ones that get funded by grants. If you do the research, and you determine that there is no sea level rise, you get no money. Now, I know Mr. Gore are extremely right. Now, I know Mr. Gore, our extremely right politician, thought that we'd be underwater by now. That was 20 years ago, he said, we're screwed. We're going to drown. Didn't happen. I I looked at a fisherman who has, you know, 40 different sites around the world. And he's measuring the difference at his docks at one or two inches up and down. So I I mean, so my recommendation to the board is do not spend a damn nickel on any research for sea level rise until somebody proves to you that it is a concern. It hasn't been for the last 150 years. I don't think it'll be there for the next 100 years. Now, given all that, I get the fact that there will be climate change. And from my little research, not really a scientist, but the fact that the Earth wobbles on its axis every 27,000 years, and we go from an elliptical orbit to a circular orbit every 72,000 years. Yep, that big yellow thing in the sky on the fact that our Earth is leaving our orbit at the rate of three and a half inches per year, things are going to change, but not in the next 10,000 years. So although I will agree with with Director Plowman's assessment, listen, I don't want the coastal commission telling us what to do. Yes, I believe the more local control you have, we have is great. I'm just saying, hmm, let's not, let's not overanalyze, overregulate this issue. It's not a real issue. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Blau. Commissioner Bradley.
Always fascinated by these discussions, that is for sure. But with the, I, the other question came back to me that was, I'm forgetting which was. May- maybe you covered her, maybe it was in Mr. Clemmon's memo, but there's not, you you don't like have a grant on the, well, you do have grant, but is there something on the line for you in terms of timing to have to resubmit the SLR program? I mean, it was true, but is there, you know, there's not legislation, and there's not a grant that you're going to fail on or something like that if it's not? That's not driving the timeline, right?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. No, I think we've expended our grant that we received for that. And so there isn't a timeframe that we have to meet. But I think we do want to move forward with it, and the the board has shown interest in moving forward with it.
Understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Just one other thing, in addition to what Director Plowman said, what I didn't mention as part of my presentation was that very recently, that is within the last few days, we've been contacted by the city of Carp, City of Santa Barbara, who are putting together a grant application to come up with a, develop a sediment management plan for the coast, and we're taking a look at that to determine whether or not we're going to partner with them. So that that could be a source of funding for at least a portion of the work that we believe needs to be done, because that program sounds like what coastal commission staff were suggesting as a possible alternative or compromise to some of the modifications that they were suggesting. So another possible funding source.
So, well, that that's pretty cool. And are you working with Beacon on that? I mean, because they've been managing that for a couple decades, right?
Yes, ultimately, yeah, excuse me, through the chair. Yes, this is all being coordinated. We're reporting to them. I mean, whenever, once we get to the point, if we do submit the grant application, yeah, it's being coordinated with them.
And you, either one of you, Ms. Pavan or Mr. Clemmon, are there a lot of other counties that have that kind of collaborative coastal management entity involved? Beacon? Beach erosion and out of camera, is it something about erosion and nourishment is the last one, I think. I can't even remember what it stands, I just Beacon. Do you have any other counties that have that?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. I am not aware of any other area along the coast that has a similar sort of arrangement. Director Plowman might know.
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. I also don't know of any other organizations that are operating in other areas along, because I would imagine there would be some, but
Maybe we're the star pupil. I think we're the star pupil. I'm just going to take it like that for today.
Well, it's been in place for a really long time here, probably 30, 35 years.
Yep.
That's it. Sorry.
That's it. Okay, so I do believe we're looking for a motion. Mr. Clemmon, are you still available?
He is. Dan, Mr. Clemmon, can you put the slide back up, the last slide? Or Mr. Villalobos?
Sure. Two actions, you just need to receive and file a report. You already provided commentary, and then just find that your action today is not subject to CEQA, as it is not a project.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Park?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Villalobos.
Commissioner Cooney.
He's he's on a call right now.
All right, Commissioner Bradley.
I.
Commissioner Park?
I'm going to vote aye, and then I have a little request if I may make it on this matter after we finish voting.
I'm not ready to vote yet, because I'm not sure what the hell we're doing here. What's, I I don't get the motion. I mean, we're receiving the report, okay, we're receiving it. But I'm not clear what recommendation that that anybody's making. Is it individual recommendations? Is it? I I don't get it, so.
Let's put the slide back up and then Director Plowman.
Sure, sure. So Commissioner Blau through the chair, really, this is a receive and file. And then you just have to make a determination that it's not a project under CEQA, because it's something we brought to the commission. So at this point, it's a receive and file. If you want to provide comments when we come back with the long range plan, whether or not this is something that should be funded, that would be the time to do it.
Okay, so if the motion maker is to receive and file, I received it, you filed it, I'll vote aye. Beyond that, I I don't know what we're doing.
That that's all we're doing, and then what we are, the the second bullet, right? Where it's not a project, so.
Under CEQA.
There is CEQA.
There's no project here. I agree with that. This is ridiculous. Whatever.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Blau. So you're going to.
I.
Aye, okay. Thank you.
Chair Farini?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay. Well, we have two more very important things coming up on our agenda, but I suggest we take a lunch break. And before we go on lunch break, Commissioner Park wanted to speak.
Yeah, just a very brief request. I really appreciated this today, and I've been wondering what's going on, and I think it's it's really important. I kind of have a counterpoint to Commissioner Blau's point of view, but that's okay, we can talk about it some other time. I I would appreciate it, Director Plowman, if if periodically, as you see fit, but try and do it every few months, give us a progress report on this as part of your, you know, administrative agenda director's report. Just so that, okay, now that I can understand where we are and keeping that hopefully in mind over the next few months, if my memory is that good, we just kind of keep moving along with understanding what's going on in this negotiation process. So that's my request.
Great. And Commissioner Bradley, did you have anything else?
No, sorry.
Okay. Off to lunch we go. See you at 1:10. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
We're back on the air, Mr. Chair. Whenever you're ready to begin the next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Villalobos. Yes, let's go ahead and could you read item four into the record, please?
Yes, the Planning Commission will receive a briefing from Planning and Development Long Range Planning Division staff regarding SB 9, which was signed by Governor Newsom on September 16, 2021, and becomes effective January 1, 2022.
Right around the corner. Well, I see Ms. Steele, are you or Mr. Bell who's starting us off?
Mr. Chair Frini, Jesse Steele will make a brief presentation and then we'll be available for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Frini and Commissioners. I'm Jesse Steele. We're just going to give the PowerPoint one moment. There we go. So yeah, today we'll be doing a short briefing on Senate Bill 9. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 9 was adopted by the state-led Senate Bill nine was adopted by the state legislature on September sixteenth, and as David just mentioned, it will go into effect on January first of twenty twenty two. This bill imposes a state mandate, meaning that the county must adopt a local ordinance implementing SB nine or implement the state law starting on January first. Next slide, please. SB nine has two main components. First, it requires the ministerial approval of two unit developments. And second, it requires the ministerial approval of urban lot splits. The first component that allows ministerial approval of the two unit developments is required on a lot that is currently zoned for single family dwellings, meaning that an applicant may propose a new duplex or two single family dwellings on a vacant lot, or they could add a new single family dwelling to a lot with an existing single family dwelling. The second component of the bill allows an applicant to ministerially split a single family zone lot into two new lots, each of which may contain no more than two existing or new units. Projects processed under SB nine cannot involve discretionary actions or public hearings, and projects are exempt from CEQA, which means that no environmental review is required. Next slide, please. The next couple of slides that we'll go over just generally talk about the eligibility requirements that apply to both the ministerial two unit developments and urban lot splits. So in order to be eligible for SB nine, a project must be located on a legal lot within an urbanized area or an urban cluster as defined by the U.S. Census Bureau. Parcels must be located within one of the single family residential zones that are listed on this slide, and they must meet specified location criteria. Next slide, please. SB nine does not allow the demolition or alteration of any housing that is affordable to lower or moderate income households or housing withdrawn from the rental market in the last fifteen years. And lastly, it also does not allow the demolition or alteration of housing that has been occupied within the last three years. Next slide, please. SB nine specifies location criteria that must be met in order to be eligible for two unit developments or urban lot splits. The excluded areas include historic landmarks, property or districts, prime farmlands and farmlands of statewide importance, wetlands, hazardous waste sites, lands identified for conservation or conservation easements, and environmentally sensitive habitat. Next slide, please. SB nine allows projects to be located within some of these excluded areas if certain hazard mitigation measures or building code standards are met. So for example, parcels may not be located within an earthquake fault zone, a special flood hazard area, or regulatory floodway, unless the project is exempted by the state or federal government or the project complies with applicable state building code or FEMA requirements. Based on a very rough preliminary research, approximately twenty four thousand parcels may be eligible for streamlined two unit developments and urban lot splits under SB nine. Next slide, please. SB nine prohibits projects located on parcels within high or very high fire hazard severity zones, but there's a really big loophole with this exclusion. SB nine states the projects may be allowed within these fire hazard severity zones if the project meets, quote, "adopted fire hazard mitigation measures," unquote. This means that the county's fire hazard maps are essentially moot because SB nine projects can typically meet these requirements. In consultation with Rob Hazard of the County Fire Department, the county identified the following fire hazard mitigation measures that will apply to SB nine projects. First, we have Chapter seven A of the Building Code, which provides materials and construction methods for your wildfire exposure. We also have defensible space requirements and the state fire safety regulations of Title fourteen. Next slide, please. And then over the next couple of slides, we'll cover the standards that apply to two unit developments only. So assuming an applicant wants to do both a two unit development and a lot split under SB nine, each lot is limited to a maximum of two units. SB nine gives local jurisdictions the discretion to decide whether ADUs and junior ADUs are to be included. So assuming the county wanted to go with a more conservative approach to SB nine implementation, we would not allow ADUs or junior ADUs if a lot is split under SB nine and already contains two existing or two proposed new units. Any new units created under SB nine cannot be rented for a period of less than thirty days, meaning short term vacation rentals are not allowed. SB nine also provides that the county can only apply objective zoning subdivision and design review standards to eligible projects. I'm the county does not have any objective design review standards, so the county is limited to applying objective standards that regulate building placement, such as height and setback requirements. Any objective standards applied by the county cannot preclude the construction of two eight hundred square foot units per lot, including ADUs and junior. No setbacks are required for a project that is located within an existing structure or a structure that is demolished and reconstructed to the same location and dimensions as the original structure. For new construction projects, however, the county can apply four foot side and rear setbacks, and projects must also comply with coastal act requirements, including the coastal resource protection policies of the county certified local coastal program. Next slide, please. SB nine also provides optional standards that the county may apply to two unit developments without adopting an ordinance. For example, the county can require applicants to provide one off street parking space per unit, although some exceptions apply to this. The county can also require a percolation test for parcels that utilize an onsite wastewater treatment system. And lastly, the county is not required to permit ADUs or junior ADUs on lots developed with two units and subdivided per SB nine. Next slide, please. So now we'll move on to the standards that apply to urban lot splits under SB nine. The bill requires ministerial approval of urban lot splits that create no more than two lots of roughly equal size. New lots cannot be smaller than forty percent of the original lot area, and they must be at least twelve hundred square feet in size. The county is required to approve these urban lot splits if they conform to the objective subdivision act requirements. Next slide, please. With limited exceptions, SB nine requires that property owners sign an affidavit stating that the owner will live in one of the new units those created under SB nine for at least three years. Owners cannot rent out any of the new units that are created under SB nine for a period of less than thirty days. So again, no short term vacation rentals allowed. Property owners are also prohibited from using SB nine to split an adjacent lot or any lot that has been previously subdivided using SB nine. The county cannot require right of way dedications, offsite improvements, or the correction of nonconforming zoning conditions as conditions of approval for urban lot splits. Next slide, please. Optional standards that the county may apply to urban lot splits include requiring easements for public services and utilities, requiring the parcels have access to, provide access to, or join the public right of way, and requiring up to one off street parking space per unit. But again, this is subject to limited exceptions. Next slide, please. In order to deny an SB nine project, whether it be a two unit development or an urban lot split, the county's building official must make a written finding, supported by a preponderance of evidence, that the proposed project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment, and that there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid that impact. Next slide, please. As for environmental review, SB nine projects are ministerial and therefore they are statutorily exempt from CEQA. Next slide, please. And lastly, with regard to next steps, staff will be giving this similar or same briefing to the MPC on January nineteenth. Staff is also working on identifying and analyzing SB nine eligibility in certain areas, including special problems areas. Staff does not have direction from the board to initiate work on an SB nine ordinance at this time, but the board may add this project to the LRP work program for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three and require SB nine related zoning ordinance amendments. If and when the board does add such a program to our work program, staff will draft objective standards for qualifying projects and develop permit processing procedures. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Think everybody's still in shock. All right, there's Commissioner Bradley. Unmute.
Sorry. So I've tracked this for about a year. In fact, tomorrow, there's going to be a great APA video call or teleconference call on implementing this thing. And I also tracked, the city of Santa Barbara had some really good planning commission workshops on it, several of them, where they really struggled with how to implement this in their high fire hazard area. So it was, anyway, not new to me. I am very alarmed about this. I know we all want housing, y'all want housing. I think this is crazy, because what we're doing is taking all the single family zone districts and, you know, morphing them into duplex or quadruplex zones. And maybe, you know, in areas where you've got one acre lots, that can happen. But the reason why you buy a one acre lot is that you want a one acre lot, and you don't want a quarter acre lot, right? So I have a lot of concerns about it for long range planning and the fact that the legislation got through, you know, Sacramento with nearly a look at environmental impacts, still astounds me. I mean, huh, so we don't have water, but we're going to potrify all these things. And I know that the housing advocates would tell me, but you know, we need the housing. I'm like, I know we need the housing, but this, there's not even affordability criteria tied to this, right, Ms. Dale?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Yes, that's correct. The state law itself does not have affordability restrictions in it. However, if the county were to adopt an ordinance, we could create an objective standard that would require affordability.
Okay, well, so, so we're in questions, and I didn't mean to go off on a tangent, but I, you know, I'm like mom Vesuvius over here. So I do have a couple of questions. I'll be controlled, I swear. I swear, Mr. Chair. So the, the objective standards, essentially, you don't have any funding from the board to work on those. So anyone who has a property that wants to come in and do this in the county would basically cite state law without any additional public standards like high fire zone or additional setbacks or special problem area. I mean, other than Bill, I guess I'm not sure how, I come in, you know, in a couple of weeks and I say, here's my one acre lot in Orchid, and I want to divide it twice, and then I'm going to put a unit and ADU on each one ministerially. What do you do with me?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Yes, starting on January first, since the county does not have an ordinance adopted to implement SB nine, we would be defaulting to the state law and the letter of law itself. And so at that time, an applicant would come in to planning and development, submit an application, and we would review it like how we did, like, for example, with state ADU law before we adopted an ordinance there. One thing to note is that all projects are still going to be reviewed not only by planning staff, but also fire and environmental health services. So if there was a potential threat to public health and safety in terms of noncompliance with the fire code, building codes, something like that, that is something that we would look for and catch during the application process.
Okay, and then going, going through your slides, you had that there are certain areas that can be excluded. I think it's your slides having certain areas that can be excluded unless it complies with state building law. Can you explain, can you explain that to me? So there's an earthquake fault zone, but if it, if you have a building plan that complies with extra geotechnical requirements and that fault zone doesn't matter, what does that mean?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. I don't know all of the specifics off of the top of my head, but I know, for example, if you had a property that was located within, oh, what is it, like a that was, let's say, like a regulatory floodway, there is an exception built into the law that would allow your parcel to not be excluded from SB nine as long as you meet certain fee, minimum FEMA building standard requirements for regulatory floodway properties. Similarly, they had some similar provision built in for earthquake fault zones and
floodways.
Wow. So essentially, if state or federal law says that you can get out of it by complying with certain building standards or having a, an amendment to remove your property from the floodway, then you don't, are not excluded from SB nine in those areas.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, I've got a couple of questions here, but okay, the fire hazard, no short term rentals, objective standards. So the objective standard development by the county that would only be able to get drafted after you get a budget to work on this, right?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Yes, that's correct. We would need direction from the board and for it to be part of our budget for next.
One, one additional comment, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bradley, and something to Ms. Steele. We are working on objective design standards for ADUs, correct?
We have objective standards in place for ADUs, and we're working on, as part of another project, we're working on objective standards for certain types of multifamily projects. So those could potentially apply to SB nine projects, but given that they just don't encompass all of the types of projects that would be included in SB nine, we'd have to expand upon that with a local ordinance.
So we might not be starting from scratch. We have some stuff that we've developed, and we would look, be looking with, working with other agencies to see what their standards are as well. We know the city of Santa Barbara is developing them and, and, uh, say, Zalita.
Okay, and so on the objective standard, Ms. Steele, I think you actually threw in their coastal policies, you know, and I just wrote it down next to the four foot side and rear setbacks. What do we mean? Are you bringing coastal act consistency for these units on underdeveloped lots, or what exactly?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. SB nine has a provision in there that says that all the provisions of the coastal act still apply to SB nine projects. And what that means for us is that we are able to apply our adopted and certified coastal protection policies of our local coastal program, even though they are not necessarily objective. We're allowed to apply them to protect coastal resources within the coastal zone.
Okay, just in a non-discretionary process, right? Or would the CDP that we normally require now, would that get swept off because it's a SB nine project?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Our normal CDP process would still apply, except for the fact that no hearing would be required for this CDP, but we would still be able to apply our coastal resource protection policies, whether they're objective or not.
Why, do we think it'd be appealable?
That is a good question. I believe they would still be appealable, but I'm going to look to Alan or Dan to tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, my take is, is that they would be appealable. In the coastal zone, I mean, the direction that we've heard so far is that we can take measures to protect coastal resources. So if there's an issue or dispute, I think it would allow latitude for an appeal, but we haven't, you know, fully fleshed that out to date.
Okay, okay, I'm almost done, you guys, I swear. So Ms. Steele, on your slide twelve, you had that you cannot split lots or adjacent lots per SB nine. So I'm, I'd like clarification on that. We've got a lot, and what does that mean, adjacent lots? Something that was subdivided within a certain time period, or what, how, how does that work?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. What that means is if you are a property owner and you own two lots that are side by side, you cannot, you can only subdivide one of them using SB nine. You cannot subdivide both. And similarly, once you subdivide a lot under SB nine, you cannot make even smaller lots again using SB nine.
Okay, okay, so it has to be someone by the same owner, though. It can't be that I bought a property next to us, two lots that were just created prior to SB nine and that I'm prevented from deploying SB nine, so that I had to subdivide them earlier?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. I think what this provision was intended to do is intended to prevent, like, let's say, developers or companies from coming in and buying up a bunch of lots all in a row and using SB nine to subdivide them and make like mega developments. It's not really intended to prohibit a, a single property owner from subdividing their lot or, you know, somebody who buys a, you know, a home, and their neighbor does SB nine. It's not intended to prohibit them from taking advantage of it as well. It's just saying that, you know, if you're a property owner, you really only get to use SB nine once. You don't get to use it for your other lot next door. And if you're a developer, you can't come in and, you know, wholesale buy a bunch of lots and start going to town with SB nine.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Sorry, everybody for hogging the mic. Thank you.
Well, Juan, I can't believe that's all the questions you have.
There's probably more, but I'm being polite.
This thing is so ominous and trespassatory to what, what we deal with every day. I can't believe it. All right. Well, I have a page of questions, but I'll let Commissioner Blau go next.
Well, I'm just so sorry. I'm as old as I am. I wish I was 10 or 15 years younger. I'd be buying up so much property. Make some, if you made this prop, this is a ridiculous law. Are you kidding me? I, I mean, I, I understand what we're talking about, why I can't have split adjacent lots. Let me tell you what, let me put together a little limited partnership or a little partnership. Let me sell a lot to my sister, my brother-in-law, my uncle. And yeah, let me take a 10 lot subdivision, make it 20 lots in a heartbeat. It's ridiculous. It's almost like, if a legislature wants to do away with the planning commission, why don't they just say so? Easier. They don't need us. They don't make all the damn rules. Anyway, all that being said, you know, it's frustrating as a planning commissioner. We, for the last two or three years, when they were doing the ADUs, we're sitting there every damn meeting, coming up with a new change in the ordinance to try and help regulate it, to try and make, you know, our, our, our planning area greater. And every week when we come with a new rule or a new condition, the state comes back and says, oh, you can't do it anymore. You know, what a frustration. I'm going like, I, I'm almost want to tell the county and the staff, don't bother doing anything for six months. Let's see how they modify this and change it. And when they get down screwing around with it, then we'll try and figure something out. But to spend time and money to try and comply with or change your ordinance seems to be an entire waste of time. You're telling me you can't do the one next door to it. I, I gotta believe in a month from now, that'll somehow change. And we can't apply that ordinance change in, in going forward. So frustrating, but there we go. My comments.
Okay, Commissioner Park?
Yes, Ms. Steele, you first talked about two unit developments, and that's two units on each new lot, is that right? Not the old lot?
Commissioner Park through the chair. The answer is, it kind of depends, actually. If you, if an applicant comes in and they are proposing to use SB 9, both the two unit development provisions and there have been lots provisions, then yes, they are limited to maximum of two units on each new lot, so four total amongst two lots. But if an applicant were to come in and only want to use the two unit development provisions, not do a lot split, they would be entitled to two new units under SB 9. So potentially a duplex or two single family dwellings, and then they could also do ADUs.
So, and that kind of goes to my next question, because you, you first talked about two unit developments, and then you talked about urban lots splits, and I wondered, is, is that all, are they overlapping? Are they the same thing, or is it an either or situation?
Commissioner Park through the chair. If I understand your question correctly, there's two separate components of SB 9 that an applicant can take advantage of one or the other or both at the same time.
And, and is it literally the same time? I mean, am I foreclosed from splitting a lot, and then two years later doing the two unit development, or does it have to be done all at once?
Commissioner, bring you through the chair. It does not have to be done all at once. Presumably, you could develop a new unit, come back later, and do a lot split.
Or what about vice versa?
Or vice versa.
Yeah. And, and then on the, are all lots that are subject to SB 9 considered urban lots for the purpose of determining the, the minimum lot size?
Commissioner Park through the chair. All lots that are eligible for either component of SB 9 have to be located within either an urban area, urbanized area, or an urban cluster as defined by the US Census Bureau. So for our purposes, yes, they're always going to be urban lots.
Yeah, and so I can't take an urban lot and divide it 80/20 or something like that. I've got to, my proportion's got to be 60/40 or even more equal than that, right?
Yeah, somewhere between 50/50 and 40/60.
Gotcha. And then, is there any prohibition on hookup fees from different agencies for these new lots?
Commissioner Park through the chair. No, SB 9 does allow local agencies to levy fees for implementation of SB 9 and for any costs associated with the new development. So we're able to apply, yeah, presumably new hookup fees, our development impact fees, all those would apply.
Okay, so all the things that would normally apply. And lastly, we know with ADUs, there's also a provision in the Civil Code that bars enforcement of private CCNRs, kind of things that a homeowner station would, homeowners association would have, that bars the prohibition of ADUs. Is, is there any kind of thing like that that would deal with associations that would bar splitting lots within their confines?
Commissioner Park through the chair. I'm not aware of any such provision or any separate bill that was passed similar to the CCNR rule for ADUs.
I'm sure if I asked the legislators, did they intend that to be, then they would then drop a new bill that would do just that. So I probably shouldn't ask that question any further. Okay, thanks.
And by the way, that was my comment. Trust me, Commissioner Park. Once someone proposes that kind of a change in the CCNRs, the legislature will come down and knock it down, just like they've done everything else with the ADUs.
Okay, so Ms. Steele, I'm still a little bit stuck on, on what lots are going to be able to apply. So I get urban, you know, so if you're in the middle of, I'll just say Orchid, that, that has a, a community plan in place, I guess, is one thing. But most of those lots are zoned, some type of residential zoning. But if we move out to, let's just say, San Ynez, where those, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, they're, they are kind of neighborhoods, but they're not zoned residential. They aren't, they're zoned like X1 and stuff. So do those get to get split too, or do they get an exemption because it's not zoned residential? Is that?
Chair Frini. So hard to answer the first part of your question. As long as a parcel is located within the urbanized area or urban cluster per the US Census Bureau, that's meeting one of the requirements. And then the second requirement is that they have to be located within a, a single family residential zone. And by the county's definition, single family residential zones include R1E1, EX1, RR, and SLP. It does not include agricultural zones.
So most of San Ynez would probably be exempt.
Yes, any X zone parcel, probably a lot of San Ynez would be prohibited from taking advantage of SB 9, yes.
That's, that's good to hear. And then just to make sure, so then you're, you're in a neighborhood with a 15,000 square foot lot, you could split that into two lots. Is the most you could split it under this?
Chair Frini, yes, that would be true.
With a 60/40, okay. And then, but you could have up to two units on each lot.
Correct.
And right now, that same 15,000 square foot lot could have the home and ADU and a junior ADU?
Chair Frini, yes, that's correct. Currently, you can do a single family dwelling ADU and potentially a junior ADU as well on a single family lot.
So then the advantage to splitting it would be they would get to build larger dwellings, I guess, if on the, their new split, because you're not limited. An, an ADU is 1,200 feet or under, or 1,000?
Chair Frini and commissioners, yes, I believe with SB 9, there's no pro, there's no maximum size that's established for the single family dwellings or duplex units that are created under SB 9, unless we wanted to adopt a maximum by ordinance. The minimum we have to allow is 800 square feet. So presumably, since our ADU ordinance, in some cases, max is out at 1,200 square feet, and applicant might be more interested in taking advantage of SB 9 because there's no maximum size limit under state law.
And, and Mr. Chair, just to add, I think the advantage of this is they could sell it. You can't sell the ADU or the JDU.
Right. Okay, and just, just bear with me here. Road impact fees, school impact fees, everybody has to pay their fair share. I think initially I was of the opinion that they got to pass on all of that. But it, it, you've got, that's not true, right? I'm, I'm on the wrong path.
Chair Frini, our normal development impact fees and, and school fees would apply to any new units created under SB 9. You might be thinking of ADUs. There were some limitations with the types and amount of fees we could apply to ADUs.
Okay. And then I guess if I was trying to limit these lot splits, and I was in your chair, I'd be trying to use the, the one where you were talking about the septic system. But it says you can only, you, you couldn't prohibit the lot split. You could only just require them to do a perk test?
Chair Frini, that, that's correct. The county has the option of requiring a percolation test for lots that are on a septic system. The only way I can see, I guess, in this situation for a SB 9 project being denied is if the building official were to make that finding that there was some sort of significant adverse impact, you know, based on having a septic system, and that, that impact would be unmitigable and unavoidable.
Okay. All right, that's, that's all I got. Well, thank you. Commissioner Park and Blau, both your hands are still up. You have more questions. Jump in.
I have one, just, so we have your 15,000 square foot lot, and we subdivide it into 7,500 square foot lots, and I sell both lots. Can the new buyer now take their 7,500 square foot lot and divide it in half?
Commissioner Blau through the chair. No, because the lot, even with a new owner, has already been previously subdivided under SB 9, the new owner would be prohibited from further subdividing the lot using SB 9.
So there's some prohibition or some restriction on the deed for that? Or does the county have the ability to further subdivide that even though it's done under SB 9?
Commissioner Blau through the chair. There, when the owner wants to do a lot split under SB 9, they have to sign an affidavit that runs with the land, demonstrating that they are splitting the lot under SB 9. So with that running with the land in perpetuity, we would always know that a lot was subdivided as SB 9, it would be prohibited from being subdivided with SB 9 in the future. But there is no written prohibition on subdividing an SB 9 split lot in the future using the normal subdivision map act process. But I can't comment on how that would work.
Okay, and that's just for, for the current law, but given the, well, it's not, not the county, but given the history of the legislature, that'll change.
Ms. Jesse, there is a provision in there that says you can't subdivide it and then sell. You're, you, there's supposed to be a residential, residency requirement for at least three years, isn't that correct?
Yes, there's a owner occupancy requirement for one, the new unit.
For one of them.
Under SB 9, but I think presumably if you were to do a lot split and then live in one of the lots, I assume you could sell either one. I don't believe there's.
That's what I think. That's what I believe. But you can't subdivide it and sell both and move on. You have to wait three years as the person who made, did that subdivision and stay on that property for three years, which is how we enforce that, I'm not sure, but.
Yes.
Okay, well.
I'll just make one final comment. I, I looked at Commissioner Park, or maybe you agree with me on this, but I, I'm willing to make a small bet that the courts will knock that down as an unreasonable restraint on alienation in the not-too-short future. How can you require someone or restrict someone from selling their property until you lived there for three years? Not reasonable. What are you going to do when, when they have an older couple that does this, and he dies, and she can't live in the property tomorrow and can't afford it, needs to sell it? How do you do that? This just, this just makes no sense whatsoever.
Director Plowman, would it be helpful if, if we made some type of motion to help get funding, to recommend to the board that they move forward with providing funding to P and D?
So, Mr. Chair, thank you for that question. I think that would be beneficial when we come back with a three-year work program.
Okay.
That would be the time to give us direction on, or recommendations that we would take to the board regarding development of those objective design standards.
Okay, just seems like this is going to be a little chaotic. So I think whatever support we can, the department, let us know.
It'll be, it will be interesting to see on this affordability issue. There are other jurisdictions that are pursuing that currently and adopting urgency ordinances to put that in place. There is some question as to whether or not HCD, they've sort of, between, I think, the Attorney General's Office and HCD, they have emphasized enforcement on this. And so the county planning directors have been talking amongst ourselves about what's going to happen, and we're very interested to watch whether or not some of these jurisdictions actually get sued by the state. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Well, there's more lawyers graduating every year. They've got some work for them. Commissioner Bradley?
Well, Director Plowman, you said the, the H's office and HCD are, are tussling over enforcement, or that's going to be their real focus. So what is it that you're hoping is going to come out of that, that they'll understand it after this has been on the books for a year, or you'll have better understanding of it?
I think we'll have a better understanding of what flexibility the state is going to give local jurisdictions to develop standards. And in particular, I'm curious about the affordability standard. I'd like to see what the reaction is from the state level. I mean, there's some, there's some validity to the desire to create some affordability. I mean, that was one of the points we made in our opposition to SB 9, was that there was no, you know, that there's no guarantee that any of those units will be affordable to the people who really need them in our communities. And that's, but the state didn't really take that to heart, which is why I think some of these jurisdictions are looking at trying to impose some affordability requirements, whether they're, you know, at the moderate level or at the workforce level. It remains to be seen jurisdiction by jurisdiction, but I'm, I'm curious to see how that plays out.
Oh, and I, I know Commissioner Park has his hand up, but you just brought up a really good point, and I, I've been a little bit unclear about that. Did the county of Santa Barbara take a position on this in Sacramento then when this is going, and you did not support the legislation as adopted?
We opposed it because of the, because we were concerned that it wouldn't really result in the type of housing we need in our community.
Well, I couldn't agree more. And, and I just think it got such short shrift in terms of we don't have water for, if we don't have water, we don't have a lot of resources or quality. I mean, none of it was really looked at in terms of a possible morphing of. Of single family zone districts into quadruplexes and, uh, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a pretty strong housing advocate. I'll go for a lot of stuff, but with no benefit. And I've already talked to at least three real estate agents with. The Montecito and Summerland, um, uh, community areas and they've got people just waiting to file next. You know, next month.
Yeah, I imagine.
Money, money out there for real estate and it's gonna get abused, yeah. It will be interesting to see. I mean, I've done some reading on it. Some people are predicting that. There'll be a sort of a flurry of them and then. It won't have a ma- as big an impact as we anticipate, like people have to get a water meter. And if your water district isn't issuing water meters. It's not gonna happen, right? Isn't that interesting? So it'll go back to water as being the, uh, the controlling factor, particularly to land development. Oh, that's only been that way for fifty years. Okay. So, but it'll, it will be interesting to see how it all plays out. I think, you know, personally, I look at this and I think. I have a lot I could split. Do I want to? No, I don't want, I want another house in my backyard. So there will be people that view it like that and there will be people that'll view it as an opportunity, you know. To do, make, create some wealth or, you know, create a house for their child or something like that. So that, it, it'll, you know, we'll see a variety of. Applications and reasons for those applications is my expectation. Thanks.
Mr. Park.
You know, I think it's, um. We can look at this on multiple levels and one is, okay, how are we dealing with the state housing crisis? And, and that's sort of a current events, it's kind of a theme. And then we can look at, oh, look at all the strange little loopholes and things here that are development opportunities and, and so forth. And, and this is, this is an interesting issue. And I know I, I, I lectured in front of a number of Santa Barbara real estate firms. On what disclosure requirements are now for being a real estate agent in the world of ADUs and all this and that. I mean, how do you disclose what the neighbor can do or what you can do? And this makes it even more complicated. I should write a book on it, like, like a ten-volume treatise. I don't know. But, but, you know, the thing that we're gonna face here, this group, is how we analyze development projects. This came up on key site, uh, three, when I said, hey, uh, look, we've got traffic studies and all that, but, um. Uh, don't they know that each one of those lots can add an ADU? Or we just had the Los Alamos project where we heard, oh, my goodness, it's, it's, it's four lots. And, and it's a, and they're, and they're multi-family zone, so they can build, uh, each one of them build, uh, a two-unit duplex. And, uh, in a, in an ADU. I thought that was actually wrong, because it said, well, they'll want it with twelve houses. They'll, actually it's sixteen, because once they go to the. Multi-unit, um. Uh, building and then that'll be an existing structure, then they can do a multi-family ADU as well. They can do two ADUs. But we're gonna have that same question. You know, we look at a project like that, oh, yeah, we just approved four lots. It's gonna be eight lots. And then each of those lots is gonna be two units and so on and so forth. Are, are we gonna be realistic and honest and say, well, let's analyze these things, the, the way they can really turn out to be? Or are we gonna kind of pretend, well, we don't have standards yet for how we do analysis and we'll just. Analyze them as though these SB nine and ADUs don't really exist. And I, I, I just think that's gonna be a challenge for, for us here at the commission and P and D staff.
All right, well, Ms. Steele, Mr. Bell, it's great to see you guys and, uh, thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to item five, then, Mr. Velo.
Mr. Mr. Chair, before, before we move on, we do have actually a handful of, of. So, uh, we'll call on our first speaker. It would be Sharon Byrne.
Greetings, planning commissioners. Thank you very much for scheduling this hearing. Uh, I worked on this legislation while it was moving through, uh, the legislative process this year with our former state senator Hannah Beth Jackson. We proposed some of the, many of the same questions you did, many of the same concerns. Uh, we will tell you that, uh, we are completely shut down as we're all communities across the state. Uh, by forces, uh, paid for by tech companies, California Realtors Association and the California Building Industry Association. So that is who got this legislation passed, um, and that is why it came out like it did. We also have on our statewide team, land use attorneys and architects, and they put together a draft ordinance, which I did forward to Director Plowman about a month ago. Um, and there are things in that draft ordinance that you can adopt. That, uh, the few controls that are left to you, uh, under SB nine, that would best help you in the county. I've proposed the same thing on behalf of the Montecito Association to the city of Santa Barbara. They adopted all of them. So I'll tell you what they were. Um, the first one was, correct, SB nine doesn't do anything for affordability, but that doesn't mean you can't. You could mandate that one of the units be affordable and the city of Santa Barbara set that at, um, moderate income affordable. People making seventy-five thousand a year, um, or less. You can also, uh, implement one parking space per unit, which county staff shared with you. And you can also set impact fees, um, so, or recommend the setting of impact fees. Um, to cover some of what the developers are going to do to your roadways, sewer mains, infrastructure, et cetera, right? So, uh, because densification, this, as done under SB nine, will not take care of that. Um, you have limited time with which to act. City of Santa Barbara approved their draft emergency ordinance last night, uh, pretty late. So, um, you wanted it to be in place if possible by January first or the state law just takes effect. Um, so if any of those items are of interest to you, uh, we offer them up freely and, uh, wish you luck as you navigate this and Director Plowman. Uh, because it's our feeling that you are going to be stormed with a sense, we just had a nail drop. In Montecito by some developer who was pitching everybody that he would do their SB nine units. So we believe, at least on the front end of this process, January first, you will see quite the deluge of applications. Could peter out later, but on the front end, yeah, we think the demand will be hot. Thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak and, and good luck to you.
Ms. Byrne, could you hang with us a sec? Mr. Commissioner Park would like to talk to you.
Yeah, how do we get a hold of this draft ordinance? I would personally like to have somebody email me that.
I'll, I'll happily email it again to Director Plowman if that's the appropriate channel.
No, how about emailing it directly to me? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm sure she would do it, but it's, it's just easier. Just mail it directly to me.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I, I would like to recommend emailing it to David Villalobos. And then he can send it around to all the commissioners.
Got it. I will send it over right now.
And, and please copy me, Sharon. Uh, I do have a question for you, Sharon.
Yes.
Why do you think we couldn't enact some of those things after January one?
I think you can, but the people who apply for your ordinance between that time. And whenever you get your ordinance done, right, you, you get no control, right? So they, you have a different set of standards for the people that show up January first, you know, or January second in your case. You know, looking for, um, you know, a permit, right? And if you get your ordinance done by January thirty-first, great. But the first folks through the line are not gonna be subjected to it. Does that make sense?
I understand. Thank you.
Okay, and then the other thing I want to tell you too, there is a ballot initiative that is in the works. That will overturn Senate Bill nine and ten, and it will be on the November twenty-twenty-two ballot. It's in the signature gathering phase now. We've seen a couple of town halls and, and produced one already. Um, that one has a lot of momentum behind it, uh, so whatever ordinance you put in place. It may only be in place for a certain amount of time if the, uh, Senate Bill nine and ten, uh, get repealed. In November of next year. I'm sorry, the state just unleashed a wild west on you and I'm just really sorry that this is what you, you're gonna be dealing with, but it is what it is.
Okay, well, thank you again, Ms. Byrne.
Anytime.
Uh, our next speaker will be Shelby Messner, uh, Yonkey, to be followed by Al Perez.
There, I actually had a couple of questions, if possible, for staff. Thank, thank you all so much, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, for having this webinar. It's been really helpful. Um, specifically, I'm wondering if staff will be giving us information on how we find out if a project is eligible re. You know, regarding if it's in an urban cluster or urbanized area, will there be a map that's provided? For ease of finding out that information?
I'll be to that, and we do have a layer on our interactive map on the Planning and Development Department website. That is, um, going to have the US Census Bureau's urbanized area and urban cluster as a layer on the map, so you can look that up. Um, and if, uh, an applicant such as yourself were to have, um, you know. Project specific questions, specifically regarding eligibility, um, they always have the option to come in for a planner consultation. Where we can go over your specific parcels, um, eligibility.
Thank you, and I'll ask just, just one more question regarding the, the three-year owner occupancy. How will that be tracked? Is there gonna be a covenant that goes along with the lot split? Um, how is staff gonna track that?
Uh, in order to do a lot split, the owner would have to sign an affidavit that would be. Recorded with the county clerk recorder to run with the land and then also be filed with Planning and Development Department. Uh, and we don't have, um, a system yet in place or an exact idea of how we would track this. But nonetheless, that affidavit would be on file with us and it would be something searchable, um, you know. That would run with the land.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
You're welcome.
Our last speaker is Alex Perez.
Hello, uh, Shelby asked the question I had about enforcement of that three-year owner occupancy, so that does it for me. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, well, just to follow up, and I already know you can't answer the question, but. So what's the penalty or the remedy? If I sign an affidavit that says I'll be there for three years and I leave in a year and a half?
Commissioner Blau through the chair, uh, presumably the county could pursue legal action, but SB nine is silent as to how we would enforce the affidavit.
And so what legal action is that? You're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna undo my lot split? You're going to undo the deed on the property I sold? Uh, that I split to somebody else? It, it just, it's, it's beyond silly. It goes to tremendously stupid.
Commissioner Blau, you're, you're correct. It's very difficult to enforce.
How about, how about impossible? It, it's kind of like, it's, it's silly, so, whatever. Your, your last two speakers asked a very good question. I'm asking the same one. How do you do that?
Okay, more confusion. All right, let's, let's move on to the final item of the day. Mr. Villalobos.
All right, moving on to item number five. The planning commission will discuss zoning and permit requirements for development in, in shopping centers.
Yes, good afternoon again, Chair Frini, members of the commission. So I'm Dan Clemmon with Long Beach Planning Division. The genesis of this item actually started with you. Uh, your, uh, commission was discussing as part of another item. That was agendized earlier on a previous, uh, hearing agenda. They had issues to deal with, uh, the shopping center zoning, uh, regulations. And as part of that, the conversation started getting a little into, a little bit too in-depth, uh, given that we had not noticed for that conversation. So the commitment was to return to you, um, and that's what we're doing today, so that, to allow you the opportunity to. Discuss the shopping center, uh, zone district requirements and make any sort of suggestions that you might have with regard to. The regulations to, that apply to that zone. So, just very briefly, just to get the conversation started, I did want to just share with you. What we currently have on our list of zoning ordinance amendments that are in some way related to the shopping center zone. This slide here lists those, uh, requests that we have received to date. Um, as you can see, we have requests that would apply to everything from the County Land Use Development Code to. To the Montecito Land Use Development Code and then also the Article Two Coastal Zoning Ordinance. And they consist of the following. The first, uh, request involves the land use development code. And, um, if you compare the uses that are allowed in the other commercial zones, that is the non-shopping center zones, with the shopping center zone. You will probably quickly notice that the shopping center zone is very limited in terms of the types of uses that are allowed there. And from research that we've done, it's, it was, it seems as if the board's intent when adopting those uses was to allow. More uses in the shopping center zone. So the request was to try, go back and take a look at the inconsistencies between those zones. And consider allowing a lot of these, uh, the uses that are currently not allowed in the shopping center zone, in the shopping center zone. And. Similar to that is there have been critiques about. Um, some of the permitting requirements for certain uses, like, uh, things like gyms in the shopping center zone, which currently require. Um, conditional use permits and the, the request, uh, the second request here shown on the chart. Has to do with downshifting, uh, the permitting requirements for some of those uses that currently require some sort of conditional use permit. To instead requiring a land use permit. Then the third set of requests involve sign regulations and, uh, what I would say is. The, there's two different, uh, requests with regard to updating the sign regulations. The first one is listed, the third item here on this table. And that is a very holistic, that has a comprehensive update of all of our sign regulations, because they are out of date. They don't meet modern standards. We've heard a number of critiques with regard to them, especially with, uh, signs, um, in shopping centers where you have changing copy quite regularly. So, one request consists of doing an overhaul of those regulations. That is a fairly involved project, because it does involve going to the Board of Architectural Reviews to get their input on what is appropriate. Um, with regard to mo- modernizing them. And then second, uh, there's a, excuse me, there's a second, uh, request with regard to the sign regulations. That one's much more streamlined and all that one has to do is just taking the existing regulations. Um, that are currently residing in our Article One zoning ordinance and adding those to, uh, our coastal zoning ordinance. Because although those regulations were side, uh, added to the County Land Use and Development Code, they have not been added to the coastal zoning ordinance. So, we have these four requests currently on the list, um, similar to the SB nine item that you just, uh, listened to. Uh, there are a number of ordinance amendment requests that exist out there. And as always, it just becomes a matter of prioritization of these requests. Um, over the other ones that we have received. So if the board gives us pri- uh, says they want to prioritize these, we'll go ahead and we'll. Go ahead and add them to an ordinance amendment package. If not, we will look at the next available opportunity to do so. So we have one ordinance amendment package that is currently in the works right now. We plan on. Uh, getting that to the commissions this spring and, uh, ultimately to the board for consideration, late spring, early summer. So to the extent that we can include any of these, uh, amendment requests, we will include those. However, like I said, um, some of these are a bit involved and will require things like Board of Architectural Review. So for those, we have to do those separately. But for the small, more straightforward amendments request, we will include those in the package. So that's pretty much all I had prepared for you today, but I'm more than happy to take any comments, questions. Requests you have with regard to shopping center ordinance amendments or anything else you might have for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, simple question. What would be the downside of simply eliminating the CS zoning? And convert all those to commercial and not have two separate paths for an approval for a project? I mean, what, there are, there are so few parcels that have that zoning designation. And every time we have one before us for a CUP. You know, the typical question of a commission is, why are we hearing this? We don't need this. And if we're in the regular commercial zone, we don't have that question. We don't have that concern. So why don't we just eliminate the CS zoning?
And Mr. Chair and Com- Commissioners, this is Secretary Wilson. So, Commissioner Blau, that, that is, that could be an option. And I think, um, when we work with Mr. Clemmon and his team, we can explore that option as well. What it would take to remove that zoning designation as opposed to just downshifting.
I, I mean, I don't know how you're gonna proceed on this hearing today. But if it were possible to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to do that. But if it were possible to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to do that, I would make that motion. And I think I have the support for the rest of the commission because, I mean, the last three or four times we've seen the CUP for the shopping center zoning, we're going like, why are we here? Why are we doing this? It's, it's an expense to the applicant. It makes no sense. So I'm curious to hear from the rest of my commissioners, but if it's possible to make that motion to go forward, that's what I'd like to do. But I need some support to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Blau, what does that motion sound like?
It sounds like I make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors that we eliminate the SC zoning. And anything that is zoned SC, we convert to the normal commercial zoning applicable with all the rules for that, so.
Okay, got it. Well, let's see, we've got Ms. Richardson up, so. And then Commissioner Bradley.
Chair Frehny and Commissioners, so I think in terms of where we are today, the most appropriate motion would be direction to staff to return with something like that. It's a little premature to make a recommendation to the board because we don't have language or the sites. And for the recommendation to the board to be you need a written resolution. So there's a couple steps involved.
Okay.
So I, I would, I will take Ms. Richardson's recommendation. She's very sharp and knows what she's doing. I just want to get it done, whatever it takes.
Commissioner Bradley.
Thank you, Chair Frehny, and I, I would support Commissioner Blau's examination of that option. I guess what I'm looking at is on the PowerPoint presentation, we had, we had four action items that, that staff was saying we could consider. And I can't believe Commissioner Blau didn't jump on the updating of the sign regulations in there. There, there is a work project, right? I mean, I would support all of these, but I, I would favor the, the second item down, which is just amend the permitting requirements for the SC zone to only require an LUP and not a CUP. That would significantly improve the processing for some of that stuff because I haven't, I haven't read with detail lately what the SC zone is and how that's different from the commercial zone. So I guess I'd be interested in what that analysis looks like. But if it turns out that's problematic, then just downshifting the permitting requirements for things like gyms in an SC zone might be another alternative that would be easier. So. And I'm not sure if staff was asking for direction on all of these four work efforts? Or can you only pursue one of them or all of them? I guess I'm unclear about that.
Yeah, Chair, Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Yeah, to clarify, the ordinance amendment requests that were listed on that slide that I showed you, those are already on our list. So it's just a matter of what, out of the litany of ordinance amendment requests, where does this fall with regard to prioritization? And the board hasn't spoken on these specific items yet. So, so just a little bit of a refinement to what Ms. Richardson suggested that you do. If your motion could direct us to return, when we return with the work program to discuss these items, that would be most appropriate because that's the context in which you should be discussing your recommendation to the board with regard to what items should or should not be in our work program. And that will be occurring in February as of right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clemmons. Commissioner Blau, so it does seem that the big problem we were running into is the CUP needed with the shopping center with the SC. And just, just thinking the other side, how complicated we may be making it. Do you think we're overcomplicating it by asking them to convert SC to commercial? Like the LUP idea?
What I think is inappropriate, to tell you the truth, is requiring us to do this as part of the work program so that it takes staff two or three years to make the change. Sorry, that's the thing I, I don't get. This is a very simple change in the ordinance and doesn't require months of, of analysis to, to make the change. You simply take all the SCs, which there's damn few of them, and convert commercials so we don't have a ridiculous archaic set of rules for the SC zoning. In response to Commissioner Bradley's comment about the sign program, oh man, do I agree. Our sign ordinance is so ridiculous, I can't tell you. I mean, recently doing my little project in Orchid and, and going through, putting up my little monument sign in there, the cost of it, the time to do it. And the rules are crazy. That would be a good thing for the work program, and it may involve more than just some minor changes. But, but the SC zoning, no, we gotta quit doing this. We gotta quit saying that, you know, to make a change of the ordinance is going to take us two, three years, cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, require all kinds of hearings. No, this is an easy one. The, the last three times we've seen a CUP in a CS zoning, all of us are making the comment, what are we doing here? Why are we having this hearing? Why are we charging those applicant, you know, tens of thousands of dollars? And, and requiring hearings that take six months. It's silly. I think the board can just look at it and say, Nick, this is a simple change.
Okay, well, I'll, I go along with it. I just, I don't think it'll be that simple, and I think it would be easier to go the LUP path, but. Commissioner Park?
You know, I think that we've had this discussion in many contexts of a simple change to land use ordinances and what we get back from P and D, and I think justifiably so, is there's no such thing as a simple change with all the notice requirements and hearings and so forth. You know, I spent many long years representing, well, Samaria Town Center, Willcomera Plaza, and ensuring that there was compatibility among tenants and all this and that. And so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of resistant to the idea of, of taking SC zoning and just getting rid of it, converting all the commercial. I'd like to think about that more. And all that being said, you know, the big regional centers are, they're like the dinosaurs that I think that maybe Commissioner Blau doesn't even believe in. I don't know if you believe in dinosaurs or not, but they, 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 they're, they're, they're things that are, that are on their way out. And they're going to be repurposed as workforce, family units and some retail and all that. There are going to be some big changes. So there's going to have to be some rezoning anyway, and maybe that'll be when all this stuff changes. And I was thinking of the projects that we've had since I've been on the planning commission, which I think is it three years, four years? And they're pretty irritating when they come in front of us. But when I count them on my fingers, I think it was, we had a martial arts studio, we had, the last thing was, and we had a dance studio, and I can't remember how many others. No, we did have the one relating to the coffee shop. So it's maybe four. And, and so I don't mind spending, you know, half an hour, an hour a year dealing with those. But I think of the poor applicants who are paying P and D charges full freight the whole time, and then, and then their clientele who are really worried and obsessed and stressed out. And I, I, I wonder, this open-ended question, okay, is there some way to treat these differently, less rigorously, at least at our level? Because yeah, it's good to get changes on ordinances. I hope to see that happen. We've been trying for about the last decade to get a lighting ordinance as one of the P and D priorities, and we're not there yet. So just where this will fit in, I don't know. But if, if in their interim for those one or two projects we get a year, we could somehow handle them differently at the regulatory level so they're not paying some gosh darn much in charges, that would be some small step forward. Thanks.
Well, I'll just respond to that. If you could make it an LUP instead of a CUP, I would agree. At least it doesn't come before the planning commission to be stupid. However, I, I just don't see the reason for an SC zoning at all, to tell you the truth. I mean, one of the things that we were looking at or we allow people to bring before us is compatible uses within the shopping center. Well, first off, I don't think it's any of my purview to decide whether or not the tenants inside the shopping center are compatible. That's up to the damn owner of the shopping center to decide how he want, how he wants his tenant mix. And obviously, if he doesn't do the tenant mix correctly, he's not going to be able to continue to rent the properties. So I don't really like the idea that, that I as a planning commissioner get to decide whether or not it's appropriate for a gymnasium to be next to a liquor store. Let the damn shopping center owner make that decision. So, so that's, that's part of it. But again, I, if you come back and want an LUP and not a CUP, and you make that big change, great. At least we're not charging the big fee and, and causing it to be months to get an approval as opposed to across the counter. So if that's the commission's desire, I'm agreeable. But again, I'm having great difficulty understanding why we have an SC zoning at all. There, there's so few of them, and I, I just don't see the need for them. I've said enough. Ms. Richardson will bring back the, the item again at a proper hearing with the proper documents, and we can, we can discuss it then, I guess.
Commissioner Bradley.
Thank you. I, I think that we're probably, probably beating this to death, so I would be willing to make a motion. What, before, before I do that, I'm wondering, per the discussion, if staff can find any other way to simplify it, like having some of those CUPs until we get the LUP package or until we get this work program implemented by staff and we have another full hearing on all of the options. Is there anything else you could do, like a, you know, waive the public hearing? Or, you know, notice that it's going to be heard, and if it's, and if no objection is raised, and at least they don't have to go through the hearing, there might be a middle compromise to try to address what Commissioner Blau is saying, but that's just a request of staff. So I would make a motion that we take all these items that were listed in Mr. Clemmon's slide and add the option of eliminating the SC zone entirely and recommend that those all be included in the work program. We'll make that recommendation to Board of Supervisors. That's my motion.
Okay, hang, hang on. Mr. Wilson, you, you were going to say something.
I'm good.
Well, I, I'm a little unclear here. The, the list that Mr. Clemmon presented to us, I thought, I thought he's just giving us a peek of what they'll be presenting to the board, but they'll be bringing to us in February. So.
You, Chair and Commissioners, Chair Frehny, that, that's exactly right. Today, the purpose was to show these items are on, currently on our list of actions that we want to take. It is going to come back to you in February for the work program, just so we have funding to do these things. And that way, we can let the board know these are higher parties. And we do have, and I, I think you have all been introduced to Ms. Karina Venegas, who, who's on, and she's been talking a lot during this hearing. But we wanted to just highlight that, you know, we are focused on trying to bring back the, the process of ordinance minimum packages. And Karina is the, the lead, the tip of the spear on doing that. So that, that's kind of where we're at right now. I think we heard comments, and you'll probably, you'll be seeing this again in February when we come back and say, another option would be just remove it or downshift it. So I think we need to explore both of those.
Okay, so, so really, we just modify your motion a little bit, Commissioner Bradley? Where we're asking staff to come back with that option of what both, what we're all talking about today on how to change SC to commercial for the.
Right, so. Correct. Not sure if we need to actually add anything to his slide, but I think what the slide didn't capture was just the getting rid of the SC zone as an option in those ordinance. So we want to include that.
Those, just a direction to staff.
Well, if I could add one more thing when you come back in February or whenever you come back. The other thing that I talked about a couple of meetings ago was giving applicants the option of doing a CUP when an LUP is the required path to get approval. And, and the reason for that is that I have seen some cases now where your only path to get an approval is an LUP. And so the applicant goes in there and pays the fee for it, and then it gets appealed to the commission. And is it coming to us like it was a CUP, which costs the applicant more money, which delays the project in time. And I just want to be able to give the applicant that knows it may be controversial, that it may require the planning commission's ability to set conditions where the CUP is more appropriate. There are some, there are some things right now in the county where you come in and you make an application, and you have to do an LUP. You can't do a CUP. And I want to give the applicant the ability to pay the extra fee and to go through the process of a CUP. And again, we can't discuss that today or decide on it, but if Ms. Richardson could, or the staff could include that in our discussion in February, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so we have the motion. Did anyone second this? I don't know.
I'll second it. If you'll include, if you'll include my addition of the LUP to a CUP option, would you do that?
I, I, yeah, I thought I didn't. You mean the CUP to the LUP. You're down, down.
LUP to a CUP, so yeah.
I was part of it.
Commissioner Park?
You know, I don't always want to be a contrarian. And I appreciate what both Commissioners Riley and Mr. Blau are getting at. But I'm not actually comfortable supporting any motion at all right now. I, 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 I think this will come back to us in February. I think it bears more thought. You talk about converting CUP to LUP. I don't even, so I need a LUP. I mean, why not a zoning clearance? I don't, I don't, I think giving people a, a, a downshift in permits where they still have to go through an analysis process and still have to go through a hearing, even though it's at a different level, then they have the potential of going on appeal to the planning commission. I mean, that's better than a CUP, but it, but let's slow down a little bit and think through what really needs to happen, and that might be, for example, a zoning clearance on something like this. So I, I don't see a need for this motion right now. And, and maybe I'm just too old and lazy right now to understand it at this point in the way. But I'm, I'm not going to support it. I think this will get addressed well enough with the way it's left. And I appreciate Mr. Clemmon for making the briefing, but I don't think we need to do anything more formally. Oh, sorry.
Well, if I could, Mr. Park, we're not asking you to make a decision today on the issue. We're just simply giving staff direction to bring it back to us in the future so we can discuss it and make a decision. I, I don't understand why you'd object to that. If, if you think that it needs to include, you know, zoning administrative approval, I would agree to that. My point is, is that staff and county councils telling us, you and I can't discuss it right now because it's not been on the agenda. I just want to get it on the agenda so we can discuss.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yeah, that's actually not what I heard from staff. I still have a motion on the floor that says we want to encourage staff to return on February 22nd with the options outlined by Mr. Clemmon, and also to include in those options Commissioner Blau's idea of just eliminating the SC zone altogether. Those are already in the work program, and we want to actually have that in further discussion on February 22nd. we want to actually have that in further discussion on February 22nd, if I understand this. And that's the only thing that's a motion on the floor right now. Are we clear on that?
I think you restating it that way made it very clear. I.
Okay.
Okay.
So, lose everything. Just come back in February.
That's Mr. Villalobos.
Well, was there a second?
There was a second.
Okay.
Commissioner Park?
Is there agreement even on what the motion is? Because honestly, every time I've heard either of you utter it, it changes.
I'll try, I'll try it again. I'll try it again.
And, and the reason it matters is that staff is going to take you very literally. Okay? And so if you say, I want you to come back and talk about orange signs, they're going to come back and talk about orange signs. They're not going to talk about green and blue and yellow. And, and so I think we have to be very careful and very general in, in what this motion is and making it meaningful. And I'm, I'm actually not even sure what the motion is yet. Because I, for that last one, which sounded better than the prior iterations, but.
Yeah.
May I, may I try it again?
Try to.
Okay, so my motion is to request that staff return on February 22nd, as planned, to provide options for us as outlined in today's presentation on their PowerPoint slide. That includes changes to CLUDC for commercial zones, for amending permit requirements for gyms, a comprehensive update of the sign regulations, and adding an existing Article One sign regulation to Article Two, and to amend that list from staff to incorporate Commissioner Blau's suggestion today of eliminating the SC zone district, period. And just, hopefully we got that. The purpose of it is, staff is already working on these. These are already on the list of ordinance amendments. And so on February 22nd, we will get full review of it and full ability to consider all of it. I hope that makes sense.
And I will second that. However, I think I need to make a small correction. I believe the date is February 23rd. Only reason I know that's my anniversary. My anniversary was the same day as the next planning commission in February. So, Wilson, that the February hearing is the 23rd?
So amended.
Chair for any, Chair for any, this is Dan Clemens. Please do not specify a date because we not have, we have not scheduled the date on which we're going to present to you the work program. I'm estimating February. That's typically when I do make those presentations to your commission and the Montecito Planning Commission. However, I cannot commit to a date right now. So just revise the motion to say, when we return with the work program, consider the things that you listed in your motion.
Can I just say, so, so amended? And everyone's following us?
Certainly.
And just to be a nice guy and not to complicate my anniversary, I'll agree. This is a, you know, whatever. Well, this is, this is more complicated than the CUP.
It should be still. Commissioner Park?
You know, adding language doesn't necessarily clarify things. It tends to obscure them. So it doesn't matter if I understand exactly what the motion is. It matters if, if Mr. Clemens and Mr. Wilson and whoever else wants to speak up from staff, is this clear enough for you as to what you're being asked to do?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Park, for checking in. I think we have, are clear on what we're doing. I think we're good.
All right.
Bingo.
Mr. Villalobos.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Blau.
Aye.
Chair for any.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, great. All right, we made it. One more meeting this year and then it's little vacation time.
I have a question about, question about that. Will it be, will we have the normal kind of administrative agenda? You know, it takes usually around a half an hour. Will we do that? And then we'll do this thing? Or how long do we think this meeting will take?
No. So the answer is no. It's, it's going to be roll call, this item, and public comment. That's it. So it shouldn't take you more, it shouldn't take you more than 10 minutes. If it goes longer than that, that's a product of the planning commissioners' discussion.
Yeah, well, famous last words. But is, is that, and we start at 9:30? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. In our pajamas. Good.
With your puppies.
Yeah. Well, you've seen him out there destroying the landscape.
Well, did I see one? Did I see one on your shoulder a few moments ago?
It's proving that prehistoric monsters still walk the earth.
That's for sure. All right, guys. We'll see you later.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.